All right, and I'd like to open the select board meeting of December 7th, 2023 at 6:33 PM. And would like to start by having assistant town administrator read the agenda for the whole evening, believe it or not. No executive session tonight.
No. After reading the agenda, the select board can vote to amend or approve the agenda as presented. There is no public comment tonight, as far as I can tell. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. So I'm gonna take a deep breath now because there's a lot of items here. Item number one, fiscal year 2023 audit review. Chad Clark from Roselli, Clark and Associates is here. Item number two is the consideration of a donation to the Sherburne Recreation Commission. Dave Goldberg from the Recreation Commissioner is here. Item number three is the Laurel Field Irrigation Project and Update. Dave Goldberg, Recreation Commissioner is here. Acceptance of a grant to the Sherburne Police Department, Chief Thomas Galvin. Number five, discussion and consideration of possible vote on proposed transfer station fee. Sean Colleen, DPW Director, and Charles Tyler, Chair of the Recycling Committee. Item number six is consideration of a special legislation relative to the treasurer collective position for the select board to vote to submit the request for special legislation to the legislature. Jeremy Marseth. Item number seven is discussion and consideration of application to the Boston Municipal Planning Organization for design funding for the study of reconstructing Route 27, Route 16, from Coolidge Street South to the split. Jeremy Marseth and Sean Colleen and Heidi Doyle will present that. Item number eight is introduction of the draft FY 25 to FY 30 Capital Improvement Plan and FY 25 Capital Budget Request. Jeremy Marseth will present that. Discussion on Town Policy Regarding Meeting Scheduling, Recordings, and Minutes, and that will also be Jeremy Marseth. Item number 10 is consideration of the annual town meeting warrant for 2024. Item 11 is consideration of the select board meeting calendar for January through June of 2024. Item number 13 are select board reports and town administrative reports. Item number 13 is a consent agenda, which is the appointment of Marion Nutra as Sherburne's designated and Heidi Doyle as an alternate to the Metro West Regional Planning Collaborative. The payroll warrant and draft minutes of October 5th, November 2nd, which has a little typo that needs to be fixed, and November 16th and November 22nd.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Do there any revisions, proposed revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Back.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And so there's only four right now, Diane, but Marion just texted me. She thought it started at 7:00, so she's gonna be logging on shortly. So I guess Chad, you want to kick us off here with the tome that you sent us?
Sure, sure, no problem. How are you all doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I'm just gonna run through stuff that I think are the highlights, the financial statements and the highlights, the management letter to get things started. And then at the end, if I don't cover anything, or if I cover something that, you know, is of interest, we can definitely circle back around to it. The first thing I'm gonna start with is just a brief overview of the financials. If you were to look at the financial statements, it's page 13 of 50. It's pretty much where the financial balance sheet covers how you all view the town and what you're trying to manage. And these are the governmental funds of the town, which includes the general fund, capital project fund, the library fund, a new ARPA fund, and then non-major governmental funds is like everything else, which is primarily grants, special revenue funds, and some of the trust funds. There is also later on in the document, a fiduciary fund, which is solely comprised of your OPEB trust fund. Focusing first on the general fund, which as you all know is your, you know, general operating fund of the town. It reflected a fund balance of $5.1 million as of June 30th of 2023. 4.2 million of that is unassigned, meaning it's not earmarked. The earmarks in the case of a general fund would be like encumbrances and articles that, unspent articles that are being carried forward. Of the 4.2 of the unassigned balance, 1.1 million of it is comprised of your stabilization funds. Those get reported in that location on the financial statements. The unassigned general fund balance is approximately 13% of the total general fund expenditures, which is a number that we like to present as a ratio to give you an idea of, you know, well, what does 4.2 million translate into us for operations? Well, it basically would cover roughly about a month of your expenses, is what you've accumulated there. The next I'm gonna jump to is the capital project funds. You'll see that there's a deficit balance there of 1.7 million. That's primarily the result of the fact that if you look a little higher above, you'll see that you have some short-term notes of 3.2 million as a liability outstanding. So while those are out there, short-term debt is reported as a liability, not as a revenue that closes to fund balance. So that's what's kind of causing your deficit there. But I would point out that of that 1.7 million dollar deficit, approximately 57% of that is the library. And of the cash balance up above of the 1.5 million, reasonably so, 60% of that is earmarked for library use, which is about $900,000. And this was as of June 30th. So that's the driving force under the library. We don't have to discuss it in any great depth. I just know that the library is a topic for the town, and I wanted to kind of carve that out specifically for everyone in the financials.
We have a plan, we have a plan to convert the debt to long-term debt. It's just that we were also litigation or not litigation yet, but negotiation.
Negotiation, yeah.
So it's, we have a plan to convert it.
Yeah, and that's fine. Almost everybody in the state issue short-term debt during the build-out phase of a large project. That's very normal. Indifference next to it, the library fund is not the construction. That is your endowment fund or like your trust fund. Just so that everyone reading this knows what the difference here that we're talking about. What I'd point out is you have about 2.8 million in that fund. 2.4 of it is is non-spendable corpus. So that leaves just under about $400,000 that is actually available in that fund that could be used for operations or costs to maintain the library. Again, just want to make everybody clear. That's not a $3 million, hey, we can do something with it, with it's closer to like only a half a million dollars of we can do something with the library with it. So the other thing I'd point out is the ARPA fund is new this year. It, I know the money's been around for a little bit. This particular year, there are certain aspects to what makes up a major fund under GASB, the rules that in the accounting standards setting board for governments, and it kicked it over into needing to be reported as its own fund. As of June 30th, you had drawn down or received 869,000 of unspent ARPA money. All told, I'm gonna get into ARPA a little bit more in depth later. But I just wanted to point out that that is carved out now, and that was done because we had to, under the accounting standards. Real quick, if you went to the next page, I'll just go through some government, or two pages. I'll just go through some government activity to explain it. The governmental funds reflect a positive net change in fund balance of $3.7 million in total. However, I would point out that 3.1 of that is a surplus in the capital projects fund, which was derived from the $5.6 million of long-term debt you issued right above that number. So it is something you're gonna have to pay back. It's not really a positive, and it's definitely not available to be spent on whatever. I would kind of point out too that you did get about a half a million dollars of bond premium, which you must have just came in under the wire on that one because with the interest rates going up, that premium number is getting much smaller because the actual costs of the banks are now matching up more with the interest rates they're charging. So the premiums are definitely going away. So you did well getting a half million dollar premium on a $500 million ban or bond. The other increase, that leaves about about $600,000 of increase amongst the other funds. Two-thirds of that or 400,000 was surplus operations in the general fund, which are slightly more than 1% of expenses. So, you know, that's pretty good. You don't really, nobody's really trying to like create a lot of surplus in the general fund. Usually your ins and outs match up pretty closely, which is, which they did. The one number, those are the two where the accounting that we present most closely matches up to EUMIS, which is what the state requires for accounting and reporting and what you would normally see coming out of the finance director's office. There is a different set of reporting that we do, which is full accrual. It's the net position, which is a report, which is on page 11 of 50. I just want to discuss it real quick because there's one particular number on there that tends to kind of like upset people and I want to explain it. At the very bottom, you'll see that there's an unrestricted balance in net position of about a negative 13 million. And everybody's like, what is that? Well, that number is generated primarily because GASB requires you to report your net pension liability and your net OPEB, which is other or other post-employment benefits such as like health insurance for retirees liability on this set of financial statements. Those two liabilities alone make up 21.4 million. So if you were to remove those, you would be closer to a $7 million surplus in this model. So just in case anybody says, what is that negative 13 million? It's really those long-term employment benefits that you, you know, have to start accumulating for. Just starting, I'm gonna jump over now to the highlights from the management letter. The first thing I would just note is we didn't identify any deficiencies that we would qualify as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses from our testing. So that's good. The next thing is current economic challenges. I think this is all largely common sense, but it is worth noting, there's a lot of cost pressures on communities now, such as wage inflation, the interest rates like we were just talking about, you know, you could get debt for, you know, 2.5%, 3%, you're now up closer to 5%. So you're talking about interest rates have added almost twice as much to your interest expense over the life of a project. So, you know, it's a certain number. And same thing with construction, inflation, steel, brick, personnel, equipment, it's all going up. So a lot of communities, you know, you know, did some planning. A good example would be, you know, they they planned a school during, you know, right before the pandemic and it was gonna cost them 50 million. They're now finally getting out of the pandemic and starting to bid it. And all of a sudden now the thing, you know, it's costing out at 60 million. And everybody's scrambling to be like, okay, we gotta, you know, if we're gonna build this, we gotta go back to town meeting and get an extra 10 million of costs. So a lot of that stuff's going on. You don't, you kind of have all your ducks in a row on your big project with the library. As you said, you're negotiating it, but you don't have any other big project right now where I think that you're at the starting phases, that you're gonna get blindsided. But just something to keep in mind, what it what it cost to build a building 10 years ago isn't even gonna be close to what it's gonna cost now when you, when you're thinking. I know you're talking about some future capital spending items, you know, I'm sure that schedule's changed quite a lot in the last few years. You know, energy inflation, oil, gas, electricity, and then just goods and services in general. All your vendors are having to pay their people more, their costs for contracts are going up. It's just kind of the way it goes.
One other area is regulation though also. We're having to do a lot, for example, in storm water management with MS4 or storm water manager. There's regulatory changes, including PFAS and other water quality issues. So regulation is another category where we're having to adapt.
Yep. Yeah, that PFAS thing is, it's coming hard and fast on a lot of communities and it's still kind of trying to be figured out, but you know, ultimately, yeah, I mean, I think, I live in Woburn and I think they're doing, they're doing a multi-million dollar expansion or change of their water treatment plant to address it. So the next thing I just remind is fraud risk and network security. You know, I know you, you guys seem to be covered well with IT, but this is just something we're covering. Ransomware remains a big issue for municipalities. I know of one city that just this past fiscal year was closed down for three weeks because of ransomware. They, you couldn't get a building permit to pay for it directly, you know, they just didn't have a way of taking in money or tracking the transaction. It's not going away. It's, you know, we're trying, a lot of it is just due diligence and people being careful what they click on. The other thing I would point out is there was an article, you know, or a news thing just this past week about a school employee, not at your school, but you know, they were being let go and they deleted a ton of like the teachers' Apple accounts and stuff, and nobody could get online at the school. One of the things that's kind of coming up here, and this is ransomware, isn't necessarily, it isn't attacking your money initially. It's attacking your data. And that's really kind of one of the things to come out of here is the destruction of data information is almost more costly than, you know, if somebody just stole cash from you. And then that's just something to keep in mind that we'll continue to warn people of. Real quick, on the OPEB, I'm gonna cycle back around a little bit, give you some numbers. You all have a contributed or earned investment income of about $2.6 million in your OPEB trust fund. That still leaves about 9.6 million unfunded. So you're about 21% funded now. You know, that's not outrageously low compared to a lot of communities right now. It's something people are slowly starting to fund. One of the things I would point out, we had this discussion last year in the OPEB trust fund because of the investments, lost about $300,000. You recovered about $163,023. And unless something bad happens in the next few weeks, I'm assuming 23 will end on a higher note for investments too, or at least definitely not down. So you did make it back. On the pension, you're part of the Middlesex Regional Retirement System. They took, because of the timing, they're a calendar year versus you being a fiscal year, so there's a shift. They actually took that investment hit as reported in your FY 23 financials versus the OPEB took the investment hit in '22. So they went from 61% funded to 53% funded. Now hopefully they should be making a lot of that back this year. The net pension liability for the town is at 11.8 million right now, but the system has until 2040 under state law to fund it. They're actually more aggressive. They're targeting 2035. So, and most of that's gonna come from the assessments that they charge you all and investment income. So they got some wiggle room in there if something happens, but they are trying to get there faster.
But do you, do you monitor also the impact of when they change their actuarial assessments? The pension liability changes without investment income being considered, the, you know, life expectancy and everything else that derives the actuarial cost of pensions.
The actuaries do factor in life expectancy, and they, and they do factor in anticipated investment income. But, you know,
That changes year to year is what I'm trying to say, particularly the life expectancy. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in post-pandemic, life expectancy, I think, went down a year.
It did.
You know, which is like the first time probably in 50 years or more that it's gone that direction. Yeah, the investments are tough. You know, I think they go by long-term averages and things like that. But yeah, we have some pretty significant ups and downs in the current market structure that we operate under these days. So it is a little hard to average out. On the investment side, one of the more positive things is that you know, you, you can, the town's money is pretty easy to get a 5% CD right now, or even T-bills and stuff like that. You know, not that long ago, you were looking at a 1%, 1.5%. So while your interest expense is up, you also with your money that you've accumulated in the town's coffers, you have opportunities to earn more than you were before to help take the burden off taxpayers. You can let the bank fund a little bit of it for you.
Before we go further, Chad, Paul, you have your hand up. Do you want to ask a question now, or do you want to let him finish?
I just want to be in the line when he's done.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know if you had a pressing question. Sorry, Chad.
That's okay. No, no, that's fine. One of the things I want to talk about ARPA, and this is really important, is there are guidelines to obligating the money and spending the money. And I laid them out there pretty, pretty directly in the management letter, but I want to go over them. You all have only until, excuse me, about 13 months, a little less than 13 months to obligate every dollar of your ARPA money. And what ARPA, and what obligate means is you have to have a contract in place. It can't be, oh, hey, we've decided we're gonna do this project. No, you have to decide what project you're gonna do, and you have to have a vendor pit or a purchase order issued. If you don't, that money is gonna end up, unless something changes, that money's gonna end up being returned to the Fed, which nobody wants, including the Fed, I can promise you. So you know, that's something to keep in mind. Now, one of the tricky aspects to that, that we're pointing out to people is if you're paying any salaries with ARPA money, obligated salaries are when earned. So literally, if you're working this week and you're being paid on Friday for this week, your obligation date is Friday. The moral of the story and why this is important is I know you all are starting to work on your 25 budgets. If anyone is being paid like that, you can only pay their salary for the first six months out of the year out of ARPA. The last six months out of the year, you're gonna have to find a different funding source for. And so that's pretty real right now as you start looking at the budgets. So now on the positive side, you have until next December to obligate it, but you have two years to actually spend the money on the projects. But there is also a spending deadline. I know, and I know that you guys have felt that a little bit like with the library project, you see stuff kind of drag out longer than you thought it would be. You know, just keep in mind that on those, whatever you're using that ARPA money for, something of a similar nature to the library were to happen, you are under a timeline to get that paid. Oh, on the, that's more informational items. The only thing I'd point out that we still had a kind of a comment on, and it's actually, the results are actually a positive thing. Under the special revenue balances, there were 12 special revenue accounts last year that had no activity. I know in talking with Deb, she went back to the department heads and worked with them and stuff, and that was down to only two accounts. Now, are you obligated to spend that money and have activity? No. However, money sitting there not being utilized is kind of a shame. And that's why we've kind of put that out there is, hey, if you've, if there's some money available and there's a good project or a good use for it, sometimes people forget about that money sitting over in special revenue. They're more worried about their budget over in the general fund and what to spend. So and then the only other thing is there's four grants with a deficit balance totaling about 32,000. And, you know, in going over it, we expect that at some point federal or state grant funds will be coming in and will cover those deficits. So the last thing I want to touch on real quick is we were asked to do a departmental review this past year, what we call an agreed-upon procedure on the transfer station. And I just want to kind of cover that quickly. That was a separately issued report. And I know that you're talking about some of those fees tonight, so it's probably worth me mentioning. Just so everyone understands, and I think probably most do, the transfer station itself only generates for the last three years on average about $25,000 of revenue. The transfer station itself costs on average about $340,000 to operate. So you're paying about $315,000 a year out of effectively property taxes for that service. And that's not odd or abnormal. A lot of towns do it in multiple different ways. But that, that is what's out there. There is a, there is a shift of the burden of of the transfer station just generally within the tax base. We did find in our inquiries that there's not an annual review of the cost of certain items, like bulky items that you, there's a fixed fee to remove for you to take and you to remove. And there's been a lot of fluctuation in this area of trash removal. Even in the area of like recycling, like 10 years ago, everybody was like, oh, recycling is gonna make us so much money. But that's kind of flipped now, and recycling isn't making you as much money. So it's, I would just throw out there that it is very important to review these costs and stay on top of this, just to make sure you're picking up the fluctuations in the market. You know, it's assumed that if it's $20 to drop off a refrigerator, that it's $20 for the town to get rid of it. But if it's only, if you're only charging $20 for someone to drop off a refrigerator, but that cost has gone to 40, well, everybody else is kind of picking up that difference. And I don't think that was really the intent of that. You know, no money is handled at the transfer station. That's a good model. It's a model that most communities have gone to. At best, they're doing credit card only. So that was, well, the only other thing that we kind of noted is there's certain practices and policies down there that have been around a long time and that everybody seems to know about, but that nobody seems to kind of understand why it happened or where it happened. It doesn't seem to be documented. And, you know, in talking with Jeremy about it and stuff, I know that's kind of his goal is to, you know, through this process, sit down and say, okay, we're kind of okay with this aspect, but why are we doing it this way? And is it okay? But we, that was really what we found out of it. So that's it for me. I'll open it up to you all.
Okay, thanks. That was a great summary, Chad. And Paul, you're the only one with your hand raised, so your first.
All right, I had a suggestion about page 19. There's a description on that page about what the town of Sherburne is and who we are. And here it is, a sentence that says, quote, "It is governed by a three-member elected board of selectmen."
Oh, yeah.
And I want to say here that a few years ago, we changed to a five-member board, not three. And we're not a board of selectmen anymore. We're, we've we're now a select board. In the report, you have select board, but here it looks like just something that was left over from the prior report. So and my suggestion there is to kind of clean that.
I will make sure that gets fixed. Thank you, Paul.
We're giving you high marks for uh, uh, reading the whole document, Paul. All right, you have any more questions, Paul?
Nope.
All right, anybody else? Marion does.
I have a question. I didn't get my hand up in time. Yeah, I I think you covered it, but do you, do you see any red flags here? That's what I was kind of waiting to hear. Uh, I don't think, according to what you said, you don't see any red flags, but I just want to be sure.
In general or in something specific, Marion?
Eh, e- either one.
No, no, I found, you know, this is our, it's only our second year. To to be honest, I mean, we we spent a lot of time uh, last year, and you all had some turnover in the last couple of years in in within the departments that we use for the audit. Um, so in some cases, we were trying to learn you all, and in some cases um, you all were trying to learn yourselves, um, so to speak. But you know, this year's audit went very well. Um, you know, uh, it was clean. Um, you know, Deb and I have conversations throughout the year. You know, um, to help kind of keep everything on track, and uh, we're more than happy to do that. She'll ask me, hey, what do you think? And um, you know, we'll come to a meeting of the minds and uh, you know, I I I think that helps smooth things out. But yeah, there, I didn't have any red flags. I was I was really happy. You know, I think the processes are 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 solid. They seem reasonable. Um, the checks and balances are 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 well designed in the town, so.
And I should say that I appreciated your report. It's educational. Or, you know, deep into this, it was quite good. Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. I mean, I I I would hope the finance team would tell you that, you know, uh, we we don't view ourselves as an, you know, I I have to come in and be your auditor, but my goal isn't to um, you know, if I see something, I have to say something. But there's a lot more of what we can do if we provide a value added aspect to the job of, you know, hey, here's some things operationally that you're not doing wrong, but you might find this easier or better or things like that. And uh, so I I appreciate that you, that's reflected in our work to you.
Excellent. Okay, Stephen, the sigh.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to basically give kudos to um, Deb. I think that this um, positive report with um, you know, uh, good changes from last year reflects a lot of hard work on her part. Um, I know quite well, um, having been on the advisory committee for the previous six years and uh, you know, working with Deb as she transitioned to the interim and now the uh, permanent finance director role, how much effort she's put into it. So I just um, want wanted to make sure that she got some recognition for for this work. Thank you.
Good, good point. Thanks, Deb. All right, I think I think that's that's all I guess for this item, Chad. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
All right.
Hope you all have some nice holidays. See you in a year.
So we're moving on to Dave, your your item two and three.
Yeah, I'll start with uh, the gift from Dover Sherburne Youth Softball, Baseball and Softball. I have Scott Miles on, who's the president of that organization. Um, we've been working closely with them over the past year, um, when the new board came on uh, for DS uh, Youth Baseball and Softball. Um, a significant change that they made last year was um, to join Little League Baseball. And um, as part of that, they play other towns and the feedback that we received, we knew this already that uh, in particular with the the teams love playing at J one with the dugouts and the press box and so forth, and um, that field gets heavily used. Um, but the actual playing surface is in need of a lot of work. It's pretty bumpy and it's hard to field field ground balls. So been working, uh, I think in your packet is the proposal we got from Shrewsbury Landscaping. Um, we wanted to do this last year, ran out of time, uh, and so in working with uh, youth baseball, uh, we found, uh, we kind of scoped the work to redo the fields. Um, we didn't have enough money necessarily in our budget. DS Youth Baseball was very kind to split the cost with us. Uh, and so this is a, this is essentially a gift to us. The other thing I should mention is, we didn't want to we could probably take care of a lot of this stuff over time, but but they didn't want to go multiple seasons with the field and the condition that it is. So given the 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 timely nature of it, um, and getting it expedited, um, they voted to uh, give the town a grant to work on this project.
Oh, can I make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, that's your role here is accepting money.
I move that we accept with gratitude, the uh, gift. The donation to the Sherburne Commission and authorize its use in accordance with the terms of the gift.
And it's a twenty five thousand dollar gift. So do we have a second for Paul's motion? All right, Eric.
Hi.
Stephen.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am, I as well. And Scott, thank you very much uh, for your whole organization also.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the support. I have to.
Hopefully you enjoy it and the uh, this don't disadvantage ours team, but you could disadvantage the other teams if you want.
Yeah, and I I ju- just for the record, like to just state, Dave Goldberg, Dave Welch have just been absolutely fantastic to work with uh, with helping us uh, improve facilities and 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 really improving the uh, the overall program. So uh, so so super excited about um, their involvement and the support of Sherborne. So thank you very much, guys.
Great, thank you. All right, we're under the irrigation, Dave.
Yeah, so um, we have Ray uh, Tarkington on um, from uh, Geosphere. So if you recall, last time we were on um, in front of the select board, we had talked about drilling uh, two wells over at Laurel. Um, that is complete, and the results of which should also, you should also have uh, along with Ray's recommendations on how to move forward. I think when Ray is done and all the questions are asked, um, my ask would be we're we're going to need funds to move forward with uh, some of the recommendations that Ray has, plus some of the design, plus uh, you know, the rest of the project. So that would be, we can talk about it at the end, but but certainly um, we've, we've exhausted the funds that have been allocated so far. I know there's still a hundred and ninety to be used. Um, and so, yeah, getting the rest of that released, so we can continue with the project would certainly be, would be needed at this point. But I'll turn it over to Ray. Uh, Ray, if you don't mind just walking through what we did over at Laurel, what the results were, and then um, you know, where we go from here.
Great, thanks, Dave. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, well, we drilled uh, two wells at the fields, at Laurel Fields. We called them wells A and well B. Uh, they're both eight inch diameter bedrock wells. We we spent lengthy time going through uh, Board of Health, getting the permits for them. Uh, the wells were drilled. Um, we hit fractures going down, but unfortunately, uh, we went to a depth of the first well to five hundred and ninety three feet. And we only came up with a couple gallons a minute. This whole area is very challenging in terms of finding high yielding wells. That's some areas are like that, not just throughout Sherburne, but elsewhere throughout the Commonwealth. Uh, we then drilled the second well. Uh, that one hit tremendous number of fractures. However, a lot of them were not water bearing, and again, I went down to just over six hundred feet and six hundred and twenty feet, I believe it was, and picked up essentially about three gallons a minute. Um, so uh, disappointingly, it was only about a total of about five gallons a minute for the two wells. However, the positive thing, um, even though the yields weren't that great is that uh, the first well, well A, that was put in, and Sean sent a a nice video the other day to me uh, when he was fixing up the air out there, is that the well is actually flowing over the top um, with water, with groundwater. So it's actually coming out of the ground at that location. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a usually a very positive sign. Uh, that type of situation is called a flowing artesian well. Um, which we don't see too often, but uh, there it's flowing out there. It's not flowing a lot, but it's above ground, and so it's flowing artesian. So it gives us um, positive indications that you know, opening up the fractures a little bit more would hopefully improve the yield substantially. Uh, in many cases, uh, worked with over the many years, uh, hydro fracking, uh, usually by hydraulically fracturing with water. Not like you see with gas and oil field, but just with water, uh, typically improves the yield by a hundred percent or more. So uh, if we can get more than that, that's even better. The second well has, I believe, twelve fractures in it, of which only one or two were water bearing, but uh, opening those fractures up could provide additional yield to the well and also maybe connecting the two wells together, although they kind of are apart. So um, the way to improve the yields, um, should you go that way is two ways. One is traditional hydro fracking um, for residential wells. This is typically not an issue because they're six inch in diameter. Um, and most, a lot of people have the equipment needed to do that, but because these are eight inch wells. Um, they use special types of what we call packers in them, and they're only literally one company right now that has that uh, called McKinstry, and they are not available until next spring to get in there to do this at the minimum next spring. Another way of dealing with this is instead of using water, um, use carbon dioxide, both liquid and gash as carbon dioxide, that's injected under pressure into the well. And what does that do? Well, the carbon dioxide expands, you know, eleven, thirteen, eighteen percent. Uh, when it does that, it it actually flows into the fractures, opening those up even more and providing larger, hopefully more connected pathways for groundwater to flow into the well from the surrounding bedrock aquifer. Um, the CO2 process is called Aqua Freed. Uh, we use it all the time to redevelop wells, public water supply wells throughout, throughout the Northeast. Um, we do it, and we have real positive results using that method. That method is available uh, in January. We can get out there in January, get that done um, before the athletic season starts, the athletic season starts, have that stuff all done, um, and hopefully ready to go. We'll walk away, and then irrigation people come in after that. So those are the two options. Uh, we recommended the Aqua Free simply because it's it's more available sooner than the uh, the actual hydro fracking itself. So if there are any questions, more than happy to answer anything you have.
Well, I have a quick one. We have several hands raised. Is there a significant cost, cost difference between those two options?
Yes, the the Aqua Free process is for for two wells, it's about eleven thousand five hundred dollars per well. Um, the cost to do the hydro fracking is around twenty thousand for well.
Okay, per well.
For well.
Twice as much, almost.
Oh, yes, twice as much. And a lot longer to get the equipment here.
Yeah, no, I heard that.
Yeah.
All right, so I think Eric had his hand up first.
Thank you. I I I have a few questions. Um, it says he went through what, sixty to eighty feet of uh, overburden to get to the bedrock?
Correct.
Um, did you case the overburden with at least a screen so you could at least allow? Because it seems like you could probably get more than two gallons a minute out of just an overburden well if you stop up at the bedrock.
That's a really good question. Um, typically, typically, we don't do that. We don't screen the overburden material. We try to, we want to try to isolate the two. Why, why do we want to do that? One, because these days with with the climate change and the the variabilities in uh, precipitation, what happens a lot of times is that the overburden aquifer, the sandy gravel one above the bedrock tends to um, dry out um, faster, and the water levels drop faster in those um, and those aquifers as opposed to the bedrock ones. We've seen this over the years. We've been monitoring some systems for you know, twenty five years, and we've noticed this. Typically, um, in the overburden wells, the fluctuation, the natural fluctuation in water table uh, over the course of the spring through the fall is anywhere from three to ten feet. You'll see the water levels rise and fall. If we have a dry summer or dry winter, we find, may find that wetland areas are adversely affected because of the lack of precipitation. Also, the proximity of the wetlands to the overburden um, at Laurel Fields by pumping the overburden, we may actually withdraw and cause the wetlands' water levels to drop down there um, to levels that are not acceptable to to concon for for sure, but also for the overall aesthetics of the area too. There there are times when that's done, but this wouldn't be one. If it was a public water supply well, that that would, that's not allowed, period. Uh, you cannot combine and and co-mingle the waters of the overburden and bedrock, which the generally the chemistry of the water is very different in the overburden. The pH is typically very low, around six, whereas in bedrock, the pH is running, you know, in the sevens to sometimes the low eights. So to combine those two, um, plus the iron and manganese issues too, uh, could create havoc in the irrigation system by combining those two.
Now, I'm aware of the water quality issues. That's actually why, I mean, you wouldn't use enough potable water supply. For quantity, I'm I'm less concerned about it, but I do appreciate the wetlands concern. I know from the deep wells, you will get hard water, because you're going to get, you're like, most likely get hard water there, which could cause fouling within the the pumping systems. All that being said, um, I am concerned about the low yield. Um, I'll leave it up to your expertise as to which method. I'm personally less concerned. I'm more concerned with which is a more effective method. I am with um, which one we can do faster, per se. And personally, I I would actually, if you know, if this goes to a vote for a release of ARPA funds, I would release just enough to actually do the um, to do the hydro fracking or whatever we're going to use, you know, to revitalize these wells. Because I'm actually now concerned if two wells come back, both low yielding, I'm concerned about the overall efficacy of using a groundwater supply to actually do this irrigation, to be honest with you. Particularly when you said you went down and you saw dry fractures. It sounds like it's very competent bedrock. And if you don't find that daylight, if you don't find that that fracture that that yields to something, it might not be there. This might not be a viable solution. So I'm a little leery. I'm putting, you know, pushing bad money after good on this one here. So at least for me, ever this decides to move forward with what a recommendation is, I'm going to vote just to authorize ARPA funds to do the revitalization and retest the wells. Like I said, I'm concerned about the low yield on on this guy. That's all.
And 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 I think these are all really, really good points, and you 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 hit a lot of, a lot of positive points there. Sometimes um, with these methods, we can actually, it's called zone fracking, and you can isolate the fracture zones, and what you do is you actually put an inflatable packer below the fractures and one above it, and then fracture just that area. So it's called zone fracking or isolating that zone to to maximize the effectiveness of that development process. So you can.
Mar, did you say, who does that?
Who, which one?
What company does that um, zone fracking?
Um, both companies, McKinstry does that, plus also, um, it would be Dennis Elmar, uh, who does the Aqua Free process, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Paul, you're next.
So first, let me say, I think recreation is such an important part of growing up. So I'm committed to doing whatever we can to have good playing fields, and good playing fields include taking care of the soil and the grass. So we need to have some irrigation here. The problem I have is that when I look at these numbers and what I've seen from other communities, these really aren't viable wells. And doing all those fracking, I I think the wells are in the wrong place. And so where my question would be, shouldn't we do a third well? And do it with a little more thinking about where is there likely to be water in? Thinking about where is there likely to be water in the Laurel Field site? I I I just don't see that these wells. The numbers are too low. And even if you doubled. I think. I think the expert said fracking might double the outcome, while doubling the outcome from two gallons per minute to four gallons per minute. It doesn't. It's too marginal, this is too. I I I would categorize this as two unsuccessful efforts. And I think we ought to. Try a well in a different place. That's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, sure, go ahead.
Paul, that that's actually, it's a really good point that you make. And, you know, and option is to, first of all, the wells were located in the best locations we could find. Based on some remote sensing, looking at the aerial photographs and trying to understand the fractures that exist at that site. So we did that with those, the best locations. There are a couple, there are other locations on the site, kind of more in tree area, that may have been. Higher priority.
Right, do you want me to share the fact fracture trace analysis?
Sure, if you have it, yeah.
Yeah, I have it, yep, I do.
Dave's gonna, I'll share with you. Sure, here we go.
Everyone could see that.
Where we drill their locations, I believe it was A and B that are shown on that figure. Those lines that are on there are called fracture traces. And what those represent are what what I can see on an aerial photograph, this is just a, not the aerial photograph. This is just on the on the Laurel Field background, that we took it from Google, Google Earth probably. But that's what I can see in the fracture and that usually represents some sort of. Zone within the earth that there's some. Weathering that's occurred in the rock. That is manifest by these fractures that you can see on the air photo. And sometimes it's, you see a line of trees, sometimes I've worked on fields that have been plowed for two hundred years. And I can still see these fractures. So on this particular one, we we went to location B and to location A. You know, the more intersecting fractures that you get, that are longer ones, the long ones. Higher the probability that you're gonna find water. There's never guaranteed that you're gonna find water when we drill one of these. But this is, this is what was used. I mean, this could be enhanced. By doing what we call surface geophysics, called very low frequency geophysics, which actually looks down. To a depth of about six hundred feet below surface and looks for the fractures where they are at depth. And it picks up the water bearing fractures at depth. Oftentimes, or many times, they don't necessarily coincide with IC at the surface. Because those fractures are not vertical fractures, but they're at an angle, you know, one direction or another direction. And sometimes we'd like to step off those, move to one side or the other and drill down. Because we want to hit those fractures at a deeper depth. Looking at this right now, if you wanted to see, we have a really good location, it's location D. We have a lot of intersecting fractures, but it's way off to the side. And it was just thought of, we may have to do a lot of clearing to get in there, and so let's take these that are out here.
I think also the location of the transfer station was was considered as well.
That was another one too, yeah, we talked about that, it's kind of getting close to transfer station, but but nevertheless, it's it's there. And some of these fractures go directly through the transfer station in the old the old landfill. So we we try to avoid that, doing this. So we picked, the areas were picked were A and B, we had more north-south trending fractures. As opposed to ones to the east, which were closer to the to the landfill, the former landfills. So there was some method to the madness on why these were picked. But, you know, could we, could we go to location C right now? Because there's nice fractures there, a lot of good intersecting fractures there, that would be the next location. If 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 we opted to drill another well, as opposed to moving forward with with hydro fracking. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Paul.
I I just, I have a lot of friends and colleagues and. And other communities who object to fracking for a a a lot of reasons. I don't, I don't have the the knowledge. That these other people have, but they have told me, you know, do everything you can to avoid fracking. Either one of those two things that you've mentioned. They say avoid doing that, that there are unattended consequences, it's impact on environment. I don't understand and know all that stuff. I just sit in meetings and I listen to people objecting to that, so I'm reluctant. To get into fracking in Sherburne if we can avoid it.
Well, I I I'm not, I don't quite understand what they're objecting to fracking is, it's it's essentially portable water that's being injected. Into the well. It's not any proprietary chemicals or diesel fuel or anything like that. It's it's portable water that's injected down under pressure, that's all it is.
Oh, they're probably thinking about when you do the actual, like, you know, oil drilling or the gas drilling in the Midwest. Completely different, this is, this is, this is literally done in Sherburne, in potable water supply wells at people's home regular basis. Or semi regular basis.
And it's extremely effective for low yielding wells, so low yielding residential well getting one, two, three, four, five gallons a minute. And, you know, they can, it's not unusual to double that yield to those wells. With just simple hydro fracking, using portable water under pressure to open up the fractures.
How much water, how much gallons per minute do you need to have to irrigate these fields?
That's a question for Jeff, I don't know if Dave has any.
Jeff is not on, we said, so. One option is, you don't, you don't need any storage, right? So it's just like, if we were to irrigate them with no storage whatsoever, we estimated somewhere around eighty gallons per minute. However, we knew that there's a good chance that we're not going to yield eighty gallons per minute. And so part of what we do after we know, do we have enough water, is design some sort of storage system. And so I don't know right now what's the minimum we need in order to consider a storage system. Because right now, I think at five gallons per minute, we wouldn't have enough flow to even replenish the the tanks. To be able to, to be able to irrigate. So the next step is is here is to figure out, can we get more water? And then potentially design a system based on the the flow that we get.
Well, we've got some people with their hands up who are pretty knowledgeable, including Darryl and Sean.
So I just wanted to make a comment on that last question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for clarification, we haven't done a pump test, so. To try to get into the weeds of two and a half gallons or five gallons or ten gallons, we we don't know that. When the well rigs drilling, they just have anecdotal knowledge of how much is blowing out of there when they're drilling it. Things change overnight when they drill. So normally you'd do a pump test, we we know we don't have enough right now, but but. Just split hairs and say, well, you have two and you might get four. It might be blowing two gallons a minute right now, just just artesian. Right at grade, and I and I'll remind everyone that at grade on those soccer fields is about twenty feet below where it used to be before they strip mine that field.
Yeah, it's where the hills are around it, exactly.
The reason it probably went artesian is because there's about twenty feet of. Overburden that's gone, I I don't know, Ray could probably answer that, but it it's not. None of this is an exact science right now, we just know we need more yield. And there's a huge amount of money spent on those two wells, so to walk away from them would be ridiculous at this point.
I think, you know, Sean makes a good point that the the yields that that we're reporting right now are done to simply an airlift test. That's compressed air pushed down into the well and water comes up. Is it exact, you know, oftentimes, after you walk away, you come back a little while later. Those fractures have cleaned out a little bit of the drilling flower that that that. That's made during the the actual advancing of the of the boring, cleans up and you end up with more water. I was surprised when Sean set the the picture and showed it flowing over the top of the casing. That's a good sign, we know, we know it's a pressurized system. It's always good. But. The true test is if you said, let's get out and do a pumping test, a short term pumping test, to see what the real yield of these wells are. Before we make the decision to either, one, hydro frac, to try to open them up. Or two, drill another well in a different location.
Alright, I want to keep this going here, so are you finished Sean, or do you want to add something to that?
Oh geez, I, no, I didn't drop my hand, sorry.
No, that's fine, so Marion, you wanted to ask something, I want to get Darryl in here. Because she's gonna probably give us some good information, some insights here, so you want to go first, Marion?
I'll I'll be quick, because Darryl will have a lot more to say, a lot more good stuff to say. With your two gallons per minute, how much of that was just artesian flow, which I assume is just the groundwater. Flowing out. So you're not distinguishing there in that well A between the the artesian groundwater flow. And the and the bedrock. Flow that you may be getting straight out of the rock, so I'm not sure how you interpret that. And then, you'll have to, as they say, as others have said, you'll have to do a real pump test. And then, what about the recovery time? You know, I don't know what kind of a cycle of irrigation you expect to have to do here. Or what kind of storage you would need. But I I I don't know what volume of storage you you would have to have. Obviously, there are days when you don't have to irrigate, you could just be storing water. So with enough storage, it seems to me you could get along with a less than ideal well. But we don't know that until you have some recovery time data, right?
I'll try to answer that, one of the things you do is part of, part of doing a pumping test. Is we install within the pumping well itself, what's called the pressure transducer, recording transducer. And we record both the drawdown of the well as it's being pumped. In other words, how quickly the water is being drawn down as the pump is stressing the the water within the within the well. We do that and then we get an idea, well, what's that yield going to be, how fast does it go down? And then once we turn the pump off, that transducer is still recording data, but not the drawdown data, but now the recovery data.
That's what I'm asking, you you haven't done that yet, and I assume that would not be a real test.
Right, we haven't done that yet, and we 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 learn from that information. We we come up with a, it's a term that's called specific capacity. And it's a gallons per minute per foot of drawdown in the well. So it's just, how much can we pump out? And how much is the well drawn down? Typically for bedrock wells, that specific capacity number is around one. So for each foot, if for each gallon you put, pump out, you get a drawdown of about one foot. We'd love to see, we want to see the recovery of the well. Come back in the same amount of time or faster than when it was, than it was pumping, than it was drawn down. If it's slower than that, we know we're over pumping the well and we're pulling out too much water. We have, but we need a pumping test to do that.
How much gallons per minute ultimately do you need with a storage system?
We have it determined that yet. I mean, even things like irrigation schedules and so forth are going to be dependent on how much water we can store. So I mean, we're, you know, way out in front of that at this point, right now, we're just trying to get the best yield we can out of these wells. And then determine, you know, where do we go from there?
Okay, I I think Darryl, I'd really like you to sort of. In part, your knowledge and also your sort of recommendations too.
Okay, let's see, I'll start with something easier, really. Just a technical detail for you, Eric, on the overburden issue, but I think Ray addressed some of those issues very well. Right now, the Board of Health only permits bedrock wells. Because of the the nature of what we have in Sherburne, there really aren't a lot of overburden aquifers to draw from. So that's how we ended up that way. We have entertained the possibility of overburden wells in special circumstances. And could again, but it would mean a variance to what we have, so that's a minor technical detail. Just on the, for people who aren't as familiar with the hydro fracking. Or the alternative fracking methods. So when it's talking about opening up fractures. It makes me think of something that the dean of the MIT Civil Engineering. Department would always say is that matter is preserved. So you're forcing something into the fractures that are there now. And it's not widening them in the sense of like moving the earth. The mantle apart, it is breaking pieces off. And so in the realm of health officers around the state at lots of conferences. They talk about the downsides of fracking wells. Sometimes it works, a lot of times it doesn't, sometimes it works for a short period of time. And then the repercussions of having caused lots of little fines or material that got moved into new places. Neighboring wells may not produce in the same way that they did because something got blocked off. Or there's an increase in the level of a particular mineral in the water because of all those little pieces that now. The materials are leaching out and into the water, so. There are other sides and there is occasional fracking in town, but because of the expense. And because of some of those downsides, it's not a really prevalent activity in town, but it does happen for some wells. More often, people opt to deepen their well rather than frac in Sherburne. At least that's what we're seeing. So. And there was another, I forget who brought it up, maybe Paul, I think when he was talking about the wells. Just as an example, there was a homeowner's well, just a single family home residence. That put in a well and on. On or near Everett Street, and the yield was thirty gallons a minute. From just a regular well, so it really does depend on what you hit is the more reliable certainly thing. So this is kind of a gamble to assume that there's going to be more water, but here's my, let's make lemonade out of this situation. I would ask. And let me say that part of the reason I'm asking this is I attended yet another. An update on the status of turf management across the United States. That use more what's the soil health and therefore the health of the turf. And so again, one of the presenters is Chip Osborne, who has been doing this. Did it, started in Marblehead over twenty years ago. Had something, I forget, a dozen or twenty fields in Marblehead, all operating organic turf management. He has now got his own consulting firm and is working. Around the United States in lots of different situations and having great success. And there were some of those folks who have used his methods and his guidance. And are are very happy with the results that they've gotten. So I would say, we need to step back. And take a look at how these fields are really going to be managed into the future to make sure that they're as healthy as they can be. And that will impact the amount of water that's needed or supplant. Some of the irrigation that would make up for not managing the turf as closely and the soil health. Which also would have benefits for anyone using those fields. And so that, I think, doing that and having a pause. In moving ahead with seeking more water until we really understand what are, what is the water that we need to sustain this. Because really, water is most needed for establishing turf, not for supporting it in the long term. It's for establishing it and reestablishing if something gets damaged and needs to be kind of resurrected. If you think you you want it for drought times, the Board of Health has been very clear in any meetings. the Board of Health has been very clear in any meetings, talking to folks about irrigation wells, that a drought is not the time to be using water for irrigating turf at the expense of water availability for drinking water. Um, so we are not going to support that. We've been very clear about that for years. Unfortunately, I had, did not see this information about Laurel until today. Our meeting was last night, so the board hasn't discussed this, but I'll say that this has been the perspective for a long time. So if we could pause, I did reach out to see if Osborne would be willing to consult with us and just provide some kind of guidance on this so that we would know what to anticipate. And then go back and revisit the issues. Maybe there's enough water, as Marion mentioned, maybe with storage. You know, not, it just might not need as much as is being predicted by others.
Okay.
That makes sense to anybody besides me.
Daryl, you're talking about adding good soil on top of the fields. Is, is that correct?
Um, it could be adding soil or it could be adding the nutrients that support the soil. It's, uh, you know, a variety of methods. Again, I mentioned this person just because he has such a good track record and he's familiar with, uh, ma- more Massachusetts-like conditions, but there were people from Colorado talking about uh, all different settings, playing fields, parks, cemeteries, schoolyards, whatever else that, um, you know, they had been applying the methods to and having great success. So, and that's a very different set of, um, both climate and soil conditions there that he dealt with. So I just think it would be worth the money spent. Fracking is a gamble. You don't know if you're going to get what you're seeking. So let's understand what it is we're seeking. Maybe we're there already with some combination of what the yield is now and storage.
I don't see, can I just comment? I, I don't see them as mutually exclusive. I think you bring up a good point and we talked to Marblehead. And their methods when we were looking at the artificial turf to understand what they were doing. Um, so we talked to them extensively. Um, I'm kind of, I don't want to get out in front of investing a lot on i- in the fields, whether that be uh, putting more topsoil down or what have you, unless we know we have irrigation. I think that it's a key, whether or not we're using three gallons, five gallons, twenty gallons per minute, what have you, is irrelevant if we don't have enough, if we don't, if we don't have water there, right? Because to your point, we need it to establish grass. We use it all the time in the areas that are trampled over because the goals sit in a certain spot. We know that in order to effectively manage, we need water regardless. Um, so I, I don't, I'm not saying that it isn't worth reaching out and having discussions about proper ways of managing it. And I, and actually we have a lot of documentation from Marblehead. But I don't think it's, I don't see them as mutually exclusive. We know we're going to need water and we know, you know, we have an opportunity with the ARPA funds to move forward. Uh, so I mean, that would be my, that would, that would be what I would say is like, I don't see any reason to pause what we're doing. We can have those conversations in parallel. And, and I think that's, it's valid to say, are, do we have the right mix of soil? Are we doing the right treatments yearly? I think that's all valid.
So, um, maybe Sean would be best to describe what is the irrigation system that exists now at Laurel consist of?
There is none.
There's not?
Yeah, rain.
And people have been playing on those fields for decades. The soil is poor and it has no irrigation. So so I'm not sure that it's, I'm still addressing magnitude of irrigation that would be required. We have some wells. There is water being produced. It's more than we have now. And if we improve the, the quality of soils, those fields can only get better. They've functioned.
Well, no, I would, I would disagree. I would say that we went, we've had massive amounts of challenges in terms of re-establishing turf. And we know we, years ago, we put down, we spent forty thousand dollars in seed that we didn't have any, you know, it didn't rain, right? And that seed went to waste. So, uh, we know we need water regardless, right? Um, so I, I don't see a problem with trying to continue to establish water.
I could make a point about the, the, the pump test, because we, we keep coming back to this. We should be totally against doing a pump test right now. It would be completely useless. It would be throwing money, good money to bad. We know that the wells will yield more if we enhance them. We know they're not yielding much. The well rig didn't show much. The artesian is, is showing some. It would be silly to do a pump test just to throw the pump test away to do some enhancement. It's, it's short money to do the enhancement, then do a pump test. But to design the system around a well that you didn't enhance at this point would make no sense. You're going to short sight the design. Regardless of how much water you're going to use, once it's done, you need to know what the wells are going to yield. And we don't know what they're going to yield right now. And putting a pump down there and spending a couple thousand dollars on testing it is, is somewhat useless. The fractures are full of mud, basically. We need to open them up and see what they do. You're talking twenty thousand dollars a pump test. Might cost half that.
Well, well, Paul, if you have a quick question, Stevens had his hand up for quite a while. Is this directly related to this?
Yes, I had a question for Daryl. She had, she had said that what homeowners have been doing in Sherburne is digging their wells deeper rather than fracking. Would it make sense to try and dig deeper beyond what has been done on these two wells?
Daryl? We consider that, but Ray, I, I think you, it was on your recommendations. I'll let you answer that.
I'll comment on deepening of wells. Deepening of wells is just a trick that the, uh, drillers do. What does it do? It just increases the storage within the borehole. Typical six inch wells have about one and a half gallons per vertical foot within the borehole. So if you deepen the borehole, you're increasing the storage to meet a HUD standard. And they just drop the pump deeper within the well. So yeah, it's a way of doing it, uh, getting away from fracking. You just deepen the well. You increase the borehole storage and you drop the pump a little bit deeper so that you can meet the, the demand of, of the homeowner for whatever uses that they have. Um, so that's what deepening of the well accomplishes.
Don't you sometimes hit, uh, productive, uh, cracks?
You can, you can, but, uh, my experience over probably almost forty years is that once you go below a certain depth and I, I, depending upon if you're like on a, a lower elevation, like these wells are seven hundred fifty feet, maybe eight hundred most, um, after that, uh, it tends to be really tight. And you don't pick up a lot of water below that. If you're on top of a hill, I mean, I've drilled them down fifteen hundred feet, um, so that I could be at a depth that would be reasonable. Um, but those are when you're on top of a hill, um, or on a mountain or some, some higher elevation area. But so I don't like going below, you know, seven hundred fifty, eight hundred feet. And this is even for public water supply wells, which are, could be eight or ten inch diameter ones. Simply because the cost becomes prohibitive, um, when you go deep. And because you have to put the pumping system in too, which is extremely expensive and requires a different type of construction detail as opposed to a normal residential well, which will put like a black poly or a blue poly discharge line off the pump. When you go a little bit deeper, you may have to put, uh, a metal discharge and galvanize or stain the steel, which just it, it become cost prohibitive for homeowner to do it and also for municipality too.
So I'll clarify why I made the comment. And one, I, the borehole storage is important for homeowners. It does offer easy storage for extra water. I was addressing the comment by Eric about that wells all over town are fracked and they're, they're not. Again, because
I didn't say all over town, but it's done, but it's done and it's done around town.
Okay. All right. So yes, I was just trying to say it's not the common approach within town. And again, the experience of health officers across the state is that it's a gamble as to whether it actually works, um, for what they hope it'll do.
All right, Steven?
Yeah, I mean, I think I just have some kind of broader, big picture questions, um, about everything. I think that, I, I mean, I think I am also somewhat of the perspective that Eric, um, first put up, which was, uh, you know, not being entirely sure that this is going to be the solution, given how poorly, um, productive these wells are. And then, you know, also Daryl's point about, you know, possibly taking a pause and figuring out what the actual turf management um, program is going to look like. Um, you know, I, I certainly had a question also of, well, if we don't really know what the current wells are producing because we haven't done a pump test, then why don't we do that first? I think Sean kind of, um, addressed that. Um, you know, for me, a lot of it is the costs as well. You know, I, I understand that we've put a lot of money into this project, but I also don't want to fall into a, a sunk cost fallacy, right? Of saying, well, we've gone this far. We just have to keep on going and keep on going, you know? I, if we do, um, the recommended, um, enhancement, that's, uh, going to be what, twenty-three thousand dollars? And then are we confident that, um, if, if that doesn't, um, work, uh, that hydro fracking wouldn't do a better job? You know, so w- w- would we potentially be in a situation where we spend twenty-three thousand dollars? The result is not what we really wanted. And so now the next step is, all right, why don't we try the hydro fracking at forty thousand dollars? And now we've just spent, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, um, and, and then we have to do a pump test. And then we find out that, yeah. All right, great. Well, now we're up to ten gallons per minute. Um, and, and I don't know, to, to me, I don't know that the next step is always just kind of blindly, well, we only have this one or two options. So we just have to keep going. Um, it does seem like it would make some sense to step back and say, all right, well, if this is what we have, five gallons per minute, maybe we get a little bit more with the pump test and then figure out, well, what could we do with that? So I don't, I, I'm sort of rambling, but it's kind of like, I, I just want to have caution and not just jump ahead and just say, well, two options have been presented to us. And so we have to pick one of those two options.
Okay. Thanks, Steven. And Paul, is your hand still up from before? Do you have another question?
No, I, I, sorry.
No, that's fine. So, so Daryl, I have a question for you. When you said you reached out to the, the, I forget his name, um,
Yeah, Osborne.
He didn't get, he didn't get back to you yet, I assume?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay. Well, my
I got a message saying they would get back to us.
Yeah, that's good. Well, if they're busy, but my inclination is really very closely aligned with Stevens and I think a number of people, right? I think we're at a pause to me. Uh, maybe we can at least see, um, what he would, um, charge us to do, uh, uh, an analysis or if he had some initial high-level reactions. I, I feel like we need to think about it a little more because these are, I mean, I'm sure it's frustrating Dave too, because you know, been at this for a while and we, but we have time with ARPA, you know, we have to commit by the end of twenty twenty-four, as we learned from our auditor. And we can spend the money at the end of twenty twenty-six. So I don't think the ARPA timeline is, um,
Just a point of clarification, um, the contractor that they use to actually, in, in Marblehead, to actually treat the, um, treat their fields was one of the ones that we used when we designed our plan. So we got three quotes, right, for how would they maintain these fields? And they were actually one of the three. So the, you know, we're well aware of, you know, the, what, what organic materials they're using, how often they're applying, at what amounts and so forth. And obviously that is going to vary depending on soil conditions. You know, you have to do soil tests regularly to understand like what, you know, what do you have and so forth. So you know, I, I don't know what they're going to tell us that we don't already know at this point. We, you know, we, you know, on Daryl's recommendation, because I, you know, she keep, she throughout the process has mentioned that. We have talked to them several times and, and reached out to the same people that they use. So you know, we're not, we're not sticking our heads in the ground saying, you know, this is, this is the only way. Um, in the end, like I said, I'm still strongly believe we need irrigation at some point. That, that's the, that's the only way that the fields are going to, um, be healthy over the long term. Um, you know, at some point, we, we'd love to invest more money in leveling them and bringing in more topsoil and so forth, but that seems like it's a waste if you can't establish grass. Right? So like this is the first step in a, in a long process as far as I'm concerned of, you know, how do we get healthy, maintainable fields there? But the first step is like, how do we irrigate them? Because we've, we've run into this in the past, which is that without irrigation, everything's a crapshoot. And the, and the money you spend on, you know, maintaining the fields, um, is unfortunately a lot of times, you know, it's a gamble because you don't know whether or not it's going to, it's going to actually take effect.
Yeah, I know. We had last year, we, we had a severe drought to, to, uh, cause us to rethink it. Um, I'm not saying that you haven't analyzed it, but I'm just wondering, you know, we, they could also help us decide even what type of stories would be needed too. So it could be, uh, maybe setting a threshold for minimum well productivity that we would have to have.
But that's what, so that's what irrigation consultants is doing. They're, we have a contract with them to, once we know the yields to design the systems. They did, they've done, uh, numerous, um, you know, uh, irrigation systems. So, so that's
Well, but I, I'm not, I don't think we're ready for an irrigation company in my personal view, which isn't that experienced. If we do, if we can change the topsoil mix and some of those other considerations, you might need less irrigation. Is my in, in intent. So let's, let's get a few more opinions from the select board and then, uh, we can decide if we need to decide, I guess. Eric?
Yeah, so just thinking about it, I don't mind authorizing, um, one well to attempt for revitalization within, well, pump test to follow up. I'm not sure about the low yield well. I know it could be two, four gallons a minute, whatever it is, but maybe the artesian well. Um, I'm not as concerned about, you know, the, um, call it fracking and that's an improper, you know, it's an unfortunate term. Because this is not a drinking water well and essentially it is something that is used elsewhere. You can say around Sherburne, but certainly in, in other areas. Um, I understand, I myself, you know, I'm always hesitant about the cost, but I'm going to attempt to kind of get some, something moving forward here. I'm a little concerned with a pause on everything. And because now we're kind of like just saying, okay, maybe we don't want to do this anymore based on this. And I think we gotta, we made this investment. We have this asset of two wells. And I think we have to at least do something, some attempt. And, and maybe it is, um, I mean, pick which technique you'd recommend to use. We'll only use one of them. And then follow up with a pump test to see how that well works. That's, that's one of my thoughts, an attempt to at least move forward with something along here. Cause at some point, you're right, these are, these funds are going to expire. And then we're just going to have like two wells sitting there. That's my, that's my thought.
The only thing I would say about that though, is if you're going to bring, there's probably a moab, demoab.
But I thought about that.
Component of the cost. So if you're only fracked one well, you know, you might spend way more if you decide to frack the second one later or whatever, you know, if they do them simultaneously.
I thought about that, but it listed it per well here. And actually a lot of these things in this industry, and me, correct me if I'm wrong, are kind of done in metrics, to be honest with you, on a per foot basis and so on like that. So I'm not sure if there's any, any significant savings, but
Okay.
I don't know how much you want to invest in that well a gallon debt. And I know it's theoretical, but does two gallons a minute? Let's be honest.
The other one was only three, though. They're, they're not, they're not that different.
But it showed fractures and even the dry fractures. If you, if you actually push something in those dry fractures, it might actually open up into something else. So it actually had something, and it was artesian flowing, which also give a, which means there's actually good pressure in the, in, uh, the lower aquifer there. And so that actually gave a lot of good positive nature there. I personally, and I'm, you know, not an expert, that's why I know a little bit to be dangerous. I'm personally more optimistic in that one. That that's an asset, asset actually worth investing in.
I think, I think, excuse me, I, I think if you don't want to call it hydraulic fracturing, just call it hydraulic enhancement.
Well, I don't think that's the issue here, uh, Ray. Let me ask a question, clarifying question, then, um, Marion and Daryl. Is the one that's, um, artesian well, is it the one that was three gallons per minute or the one that was two?
It was two.
Two.
So it's actually not the high yield one that's, that's
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And, and another thing, uh, just to follow up there, uh, I tried to clarify this before, the artesian uh, water flow there is likely, uh, overburdened flow, right?
No.
Well, no, no.
Oh, it's on a fracture. Oh, well, that makes a difference. Okay.
It's absolutely not. It's a seal.
Completed. Yeah, it's not completed.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks.
These wells, these wells, I'll just clarify that. These wells, the casing is installed about twenty feet into competent rock. And then the casing is grouted with a cement betonite seal from the bedrock surface to the, from the bedrock overburden interface all the way to the surface. So there is a, an isolation, complete isolation between the overburden and the bedrock system.
Right. Okay. So having been the, the, uh, the check writer for quite a lot of wells in my life, um, I, I I have to say an instinct with two wells like this is to go to another place, try another spot. And looking at those spots, you have at least two other spots where there are a lot of intersecting long fractures. So my, my question is specific, uh, how much does it cost to drill one of these wells as far as you've gone with one and two? How much does one of these cost to drill?
Uh, around 26,000.
Okay. So, uh, yeah. So then the question is, do you try to drill another one? You may hit a completely different geology down there. Or do you throw another 10 or 20,000 uh, into the ones that you already know are not that great? I mean, that's just a question. I, I don't have an opinion.
No, no, the thing is, these are all really good questions and great discussion on this. Um, I guess push came to shove, if you said, do I want to spend the money doing fracture enhancement to get more yield? Or would I rather drill another well in another location in anticipation that I'm going to hit some more water? Or even if I hit, you know, 10 to 15, 20 gallons a minute in that well, combine that with, with the other ones, then now I'm, now I'm starting to look a lot better than, than I was before. And maybe eventually these other wells do get fracture enhanced or, or not. But the money may be better spent doing another well as opposed to doing the fracture enhancement.
That would be, that would be my instinct.
Let me ask, uh, I'm, I, I see your hand there. I want to ask Erica, uh, uh, a qualifying question because you made, I think you made your comment based on assuming that the Artesian flow was from the three gallon per minute well. Does that change your reaction?
It does a little bit, but I'm only, only a little bit. I mean, the, the, the well that showed fracture yield a little bit more. If you're going to invest in one well, and again, there's no actual law of diminishing returns of doing a second well with a mobile, like you said, I would still like invest in one well. Hearing that a second well is only, a third well is only 25 grand. I'm starting to rethink maybe a third well, to be honest.
So am I.
Not just with the ARPA funds and doing the pause that we all spoke about, you know, I'm a little cautious. I'm walking away and rethinking this whole thing now, um. You know, and the ARPA funds, because I give notice when the ARPA funds go away and these walls aren't yielding much, I think it's going to be a stretch to actually, you know, um, get the authorization to get town funds to spend anything on this.
And that location C.
Before we walk away.
That location C for, say, say a third well, that looks a little too close to the other ones for me. I mean, I would go.
I thought so too. There's one on the upper right-hand picture. I can't remember what letter it was, but the upper right-hand picture there.
They were worried about the transfer station, I think.
Right.
Yeah, case off the overburden.
So Daryl, do you want to, uh, re-ground us here sort of in a, uh?
Uh, just a, a couple of things. One, I want to remember to ask Dave if you could, uh, didn't realize that quotes had been collected for other services and you've gotten some information, could they be posted to the website so that we can see them?
Sure.
Okay. That'd be really helpful. And I didn't say that no irrigation, if you recall, I mentioned that obviously you need irrigation to establish from seed. You have to have that constant water daily, but I think from some of the other information that the, um, irrigation consultant provided, I do think that and, and I don't know how to say this in a nice way, but it's an irrigation consultant. Their business is to make a very exciting soup to nuts irrigation services, infrastructure, monitoring systems, controls. And I, I don't think we've established like, what is the target quantity that is really needed? If you're working on soil health and the resiliency of the grass at the same time, because even just frequency, which is again, for irrigation system experts, and I've had to deal with this for clients of mine, um, not playing fields, but corporate campuses. Irrigation every day or every other day is the norm, and that is not what makes for a resilient or better field, playing field. The deeper those roots grow, the better off you are, which means not watering them with frequency. So there's, to me, there's conflict there. It goes against, you know, everything else I've heard about making turf fields resilient in the long term. And Jeff, you mentioned the drought and gee, you know, we need to think about irrigation. Again, drought is not the time to be irrigating for aesthetic reasons or others. So um, if it was food production, that's a different story, but this is not food production. So the, that's also something that I think is, it's a tricky trade-off. You're talking. Yes, athletics is, I think, really important. It's important in our family, um. But against drinking water, it's, I, I don't see that being something that we could advocate for at the Board of Health or, or have not, have not historically for years. Um. So, so that's that.
I, I just.
So I think, oh, on, on the pause, I only meant pause, like step back and make sure we know what the target is for water. I wasn't saying pause indefinitely, just make sure that we've done the homework on what is the gallonage that we're after. So given what you're talking about now, can we have something in parallel, uh, where we try to get better information about what is a tar, a reasonable target for irrigation when you're establishing seed? And then, as I said, that kind of periodic re-establishment of seed. And I don't know if there are any other kind of circumstances other than drought where, um, you would need irrigation, but to get someone who knows that intimately to weigh in on that.
I, I just, just, I, I believe the town already has that in, in Jeff Bowman, irrigation consulting. This is, this is what he's been doing for 30 plus years, um, around the world. Understanding both soil conditions and also frequency of irrigation water that's to be done. He could tell you how many gallons that you will need per acre of what you're doing to establish the, the, the fields, to maintain the fields, uh, under drought conditions, under non-drought conditions. So I, I believe he's already, he's already under contract with the town to, to do this. And, and, and a comment on, um, the, the viability of, uh, using irrigation water, uh, during drought conditions from the bedrock aquifers. My experience over many years, and we've done studies both, uh, in bedrock aquifers and overburden aquifers and comparing the, the, the changes in water levels in sand and gravel aquifers versus bedrock aquifers. And we've been doing this, uh, in one case, we've been doing it for over 30 years in one location, monitoring both. And even when the sand and gravel aquifer under the 2016 or the 2019, a couple of years over the last few years, we've seen the water levels drop down. Um, we've seen no corresponding drop um, in the, in the water levels in the bedrock aquifers. Because those typically take a longer period of time to show an impact from, um, drought-like conditions in the overburden, which a recharge comes from in the overburden. So the bedrock system really doesn't behave as you would think under, under drought conditions. But it lags way behind, uh, years, some cases behind the overburden system and what happens there. I've actually written papers on that too.
Okay.
Uh, could I just comment on a couple of things, only because some of this information sounds reasonable, but it also is very different. Than what I heard, as I've said, I just went to another of these presentations about turf management and and I've read the Penn State has done a lot on irrigation, um, and comparison to artificial turf fields and water usage and, uh, uh, been following this for a couple of decades now. Uh, for town reasons and so the irrigation regime being proposed by the current consultant just does not align with what I have heard. So that could just be two different camps and I happen to be listening to one camp and one philosophy. And then there's another one, and I could believe that you could water as much as that irrigation um, consultant has proposed to the town and have wonderful looking fields, but then they are wholly reliant on that constant supply of water. They will do well watering every day or every other day, but they will not survive when there is not water to allocate to that, which means a drought, again, which means that trade-off with drinking water quality. And then they don't have the deep roots to be able to survive through the drought. And then the other thing is even though, uh, you know, and Ray, I appreciate that, uh, you know, you've done the studies about looking at groundwater lags and what have you, but the Board of Health oversees the installation of wells on a routine basis. We have 1,600 wells roughly in town. Um, and, and also tracks for uh, groundwater and other conditions. And we're pegging the observations in town many times a year to USGS wells and patterns, because we always have to determine high groundwater levels and other kind of conditions, but we're looking at the USGS wells. And yes, there is a lag. But we do see the effect and it doesn't feel like as big a length of time. And we do see that people, and again, we have bedrock wells almost exclusively in town. There are very few historic dug wells remaining in town. And we do see that at times of drought and towards the end of the last multi-year, you know, low rainfall period that there were, uh, many more than usual. Usually we don't have people having to put in replacement wells or deepen their wells. And we were seeing it after that period. So we've been noticing our anecdotal in-town observations or that the effect does show up sooner. And we've also had people who, when their neighbors or when there was a new well going in next door nearby that, um, during the pump tests for that neighbors would sometimes see effects and particularly during drought periods. So when, when things were stressed in any case, so so I'm trying to balance what you're saying, but with what we've been seeing in town. Now, or elsewhere.
And I appreciate that. And I've actually done, um, similar studies, um, where I've actually monitored and run simultaneous pumping tests on 65 residential wells, uh, Nate watching neighbor versus neighbor to see what happened. And, um, you know, sometimes we have transushes in these wells and we're told by people, no, we don't irrigate at all, do anything. And then we show them the transusidator says, well, between this time and this time, you're irrigating your lawns and stuff like that. And then so the harsh reality of the truth comes out when you have monitoring devices in the wells and you can actually see these things. So oftentimes people are overtaxing their wells, um, or they just have pretty shallow wells. And when they're pumping them hard and lots, lots of development around them, we do see that it dropping down because so many people are tapping that bedrock aquifer within a, you know, in, in a short area or confined area. So we do see that, but that is common in a lot of places these days. So to your point, so you're absolutely right.
Thanks, Ray. So I'm going to let Paul, if you want to add something here, then Dave, uh, will be next.
Yes, uh, I think it was Ray who said, uh, the town has a great consultant on irrigation and he would have the answers. And I just went through paperwork looking for the number that I asked an hour ago, which is how much water do we need? And if we have a consultant, what is the number that we need? Like, like to ask Ray or Dave to give us that number?
Yeah, it was the 80 gallons per minute. That, that would be without any storage. That was the, that was the number we were, we were shooting for.
All right. And the other comment I would make is basically the same comment I made in the beginning, which is when, when I have sat in meetings like this and the other communities that I represent. Most times they've gone to doing a third well in a, a different location. And if the cost is 26,000 or 40,000 for one well, that's not. The, the hydro fracking is 20,000 a well, so that's 40,000. There. So if you hydrofrack the two wells we've done, that's the equivalent of, of installing a third. Even if the third well only gives you another four or five gallons per minute, then maybe at some point you can connect them all. And then you're at, at the 15, 10, 15 gallons, gives you a little more to work with. But there's a real chance that you can find something better by, by looking at someplace different. So I, I like the idea of, of taking a look at what, what can we do with less than 80? And seeing if that target is just what's all and does it have a cushion to it and a safety factor and all that kind of stuff? If, if we, if we have 10 gallons, we can get 10 gallons out of these wells that we have. What can the irrigation guy do with that? And could that solve the problem? So I'm still leaning towards the third well and I'm, I'm leaning towards the idea of talking to this irrigation guy and getting a seeing what he could do with less than 80. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Sean?
Yeah, I, I just want to make one more comment before we, you guys vote. The, you, the town has made an investment north of 150, probably more like $170,000 to put those two wells in the ground. You can punch six more wells down there. It doesn't matter. You're going to need to figure out how much water comes out of those two. You already made that investment. You're not going to walk away from those wells. You're not going to abandon them. You're not going to just get rid of them. You're going to use them. You need to know how much water they flow. And to the point about what you engineer afterwards, obviously the target was 80. If we got 80 on the first well, we would have stopped. And then we no discussion of storage. Storage costs a lot of money. So the first thing you have to do, we want to, we're, we're like seven steps down the road. And this is why I did not, I begged them to not have this conversation tonight because we shouldn't be having it. There's no questions answered. The next question that has to be answered is how much water do you get out? Then you answer the question of how much water do you need? And that inversely tells you how much storage you need to be able to make that much water per day that you need to do. So you, you keep asking questions that can't be answered. The first question that has to be answered is those two wells that we already spent $150,000, how much will they yield? They have to be enhanced. Because you're not, if you design the system around five gallons a minute per well, you're going to spend a ton of money on storage that you might not have needed to spend. So you need to do it. It's $20,000 to figure out what the $150,000 worth of wells is going to yield. So that's the only option. There's no, there's no reason to talk to more consultants. Ray is the consultant, by the way. He's well-established consultant. He's written papers on this. Does, you don't need to talk to five more people. The smartest guy in the room is here. And that's all, we don't need to talk about the design of the system and we don't need to talk about what kind of grass seed or fertilizer or anything else. We need to figure out with the two wells that we already invested in. We're not going to punch more wells in that field right now. And we're not putting a well closer to the, to the cap landfill. That's all I got.
Eric? Thanks, Sean.
Yep. I think, um, there's obviously a lot of concern around here. Um, I do think we should actually try the aqua feed process on one well. I know people won't like that, but it's kind of an unknown. It's new to me. I've never heard of it. I've heard of hydro fracking all, all my entire career. If though, if that, if the aqua feed doesn't work on one well, it doesn't look like it, it yields any better, then we can reassess maybe a third well or doing something to the two wells together of some hydro fracking, but at least they can do it. They can do it quickly and come back. They can report to us. Um, I don't want to micromanage this, but I think it's already happening. And I think that there's a, a, it seems to be some varying thoughts on, on between everyone in this entire room there. So I'm actually going as far as to actually make a motion to authorize ARPA funds to actually perform aqua feed on one well, well, to be. About perform Aqua Feed on one well, well, to be selected by Ray, uh, I think will be the best yield. And just uh, and see how it does it. You don't have to do a full-fledged pump test like you're establishing a zone two, but you can actually just. Do a short kind of quick yield to see um if it made any improvement in the well. And that's my motion.
All right, before we discuss that, do I have a second for Eric's motion?
I'll second Eric's motion. That makes sense.
And Sean, your hand's still up. Are you, do you want to add something? Is it just still up from before? Might have run away. Um, so. Um, so um, let's discuss the motion before we vote and Paul, you have your hand up now.
I'm trying to lower it, trying to.
Okay.
Hitting these buttons. Sorry.
Do, uh, so you don't need your hand up? You don't have a question?
No.
Okay, uh, Stephen does, I think.
Um, yeah, so I guess before we vote on it, I wanted to ask. Um, Ray, if you know, um, I think, you know, Eric had suggested that because the quote is. Simply uh eleven thousand five hundred per well, that um, that it, it wouldn't matter if they were. Uh, done at the same time or if they were done at different times. You know, d- does that sound accurate? Um, or would it be more expensive to do the two wells separately than it would be to do them together?
Alright, it sounds accurate, but I can confirm that for you. With the, the vendor.
Yeah. Um, cause I, I would just want to make sure that we, we weren't ending up paying more money. If we decided, okay, well, now we have to do the other well as well. Uh, but I mean, I do. I think I like Eric's general approach of, alright, well, let's do something and let's, what is the minimum that we can do? To get a better idea of what um, these wells are producing, so. Um, yeah, I, I think I, I, I'm reasonably comfortable that, that, that. Um, we aren't ending up uh, shooting ourselves in the foot budget-wise if we just do one well right now. Um, so. I think I would support this, um, but I do. I, I do think that it makes a lot of sense to um, also try to figure out, okay. With a fairly minimal um, yield of water, what are the actual land management options that are out there? Um, and, you know, therefore what kind of a holding system and general irrigation design? Um, would, would, would we be looking at and, and would it be feasible and what, what, what is the total amount of water we would need? So I, I do think that doing everything in parallel makes sense.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised, so um, given we've, that we've been at this for a while. Uh, I suggest we now vote on Paul's motion. So um, Eric?
Eric's, it's Eric's motion.
Eric's motion. My, my mistake. Thanks. Eric?
Alright. Could I, just a point of clarification?
Sure.
This was a motion to do one well, Eric, or if there's economy of scale to do two, we don't know what that is yet.
Doesn't sound like it based on Stephen's question, the economy of scale and given the magnitude, if it is one or two thousand. My own reason is not just because it's the cheapest, quickest thing to do. It's a little bit of that. It's also unknown. I've never heard of this technology. I'm not an expert, but I know enough to be dangerous. Like I said. If it was actually hydro fracking itself, I actually might want to do more, you know what I mean? Cause that is a known technology. That's. I don't want to call it proven, because what Daryl said is right. There have been a lot of times where actually get short-term yield and then a year or two later it clogs up. But nonetheless, I'd like to try, see this thing how it works, give it a shot and see the efficacy in this. Cause it also should indicate also how well it works in this type of rock and this formation. You know, all, you know, each bedrock is a little bit different to some degree and um, if it can't crack the well, it's already shown fractures then.
Are you suggesting well, well A or well B? Are you, are you specifying which well?
Up to Ray. Nope, it's up to Ray. It really is. I'm not gonna specify the money. It probably be up to like maybe thirteen thousand or something like that, because. Maybe they gotta pump some stuff or whatever else. I'll leave that between like Ray and Jeremy to kind of decide. I'm just authorizing enough to do one well here. And give a uh, a quick, I don't want to call it a pump test. Could people take that to mean like seventy-two hour tests? Does, to give like a, a quick test into what's um, what, how, how efficient it is?
There's enhanced. Yeah, I, I'll still second. Still sounds okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Eric?
I.
We're voting now. Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Well, based on uh, what Sean Colleen said and based on the fact that it just passed, I'll vote yes. Cause everybody else.
And I am I as well, so we're five to zero Diane. Thanks, Dave. I appreciate.
Thank you.
Putting you through the wringer here tonight. And Ray, thank you. Thank you for your insights.
Anytime.
Thanks, Ray. Take care.
Alright.
Alright, so my suggestion is we have a quick one, which is a grant to the police department and we take a five-minute break. Heather, he's been, we've been at this two hours so far. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't see the police chief here though. Are you gonna just present that, Jeremy?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to, Jeff.
I don't see it. Were you expecting him to be here?
I, I was, uh.
Yes, I was too.
Um, he hasn't reached out. I, I, I hope everything's okay, but I'm happy to, to cover this or, or we could move it later and hope he joins us. Um. But our, our item four, your, this is for uh, the board of selectmen to accept. Uh, an Edward J. Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG grant. In the amount of forty thousand thirty-five dollars for a replacement of taser or electronic devices. These are replacements of the existing tasers that the department has. Uh, they've um, been deployed for more than five years. They're, they've, the current tasers have, you know, beyond the recent uh, uh, useful life. Um, they had uh, the chief had previously put in the capital plan the replacement of these tasers, so this grant. Will allow us to, to move that off the capital plan or to be funded by the grants. Uh, he's also proposing, there's a little shortfall unfortunately, the grant didn't provide uh, the full funds to do all of the tasers. So to get them all done, uh, he's proposing to use some surplus um, funds from. The sale of decommissioned police vehicles to make up the, the small difference.
Well, that's terrific.
So could I move to accept the grant?
Absolutely.
For the purposes for which the grant was given.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, Eric?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I'm I as well too. Thank you, Jeremy. So why don't we, it's eight-thirty now. We've been at two hours. Why don't we try to come back at eight-thirty-five? Can people uh, do that and we'll. Uh, turn to the transfer station fees at, at eight-thirty-five?
I'll try to get back in time, but I have to go put James to bed now, so we'll just see how compliant.
We're very good at putting people to sleep here too, if you need any help.
Yeah.
Talk, talk to you soon. Alright, let's see if we get everybody back here. We got two out of five right now. Actually, uh, Tom just joined though.
He's coming back on now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We paused recording during that break. We just kind of recorded the whole, is that going on YouTube?
I forgot to do it, but Diane did it.
They can edit that out here, if you want. If we happen to record.
Does that, Rick does that for us all the time.
Exactly.
Alright, so shall we go on to um, transfer station? Uh, Sean and um, Charlie's been very, very patient. Is he still here? He's still here.
I hope we didn't lose Charlie. Hilarious.
He's there, yeah.
Yes, I woke up. I'm here, yes.
We'll put you back to sleep, but thank you for hanging in with us.
And I, I was following the conversation about the fracking. My well isn't far from where you're talking about, so.
Okay. Alright, so uh, you're gonna lead off, Sean?
Yeah, well, it's, it's been, it's been years since we adjusted our, our fees. Uh, the last time we were for the select board was, I think, well before twenty-twenty. Uh, something like that, so it's been quite a long time. Uh, Sean has commented and also the collector's office has commented that we. Are in fact, uh, not making the money that we're spending for fees, uh, for, for, for uh. Recycling all this stuff that, that we are, we're doing. So uh, the whole list, uh, the list was in your packet. I think you, you can see what the list is. Uh, that uh, is, is the fairly modest increases that we're talking about. Uh, for fees, for all those things that people drop off at the, at the transfer station that we charge fees for. We don't charge fees for everything. And there were some discussion earlier about how, how, how little we actually contribute, okay, compared to the budget for recycling in the town. Uh, there's not much we can do about that, but we can at least try to uh, defray some of the expenses that we spend to, to take care of the stuff. So uh, working with collector's office and doing some research, we came up with fees that allow us to recoup the expenses that we. Spend for the things we charge fees for in order to uh, uh, not be losing money, uh, as much money on those things. Is that, so I, I, I don't want to really burden everybody by going through all the different fees and things like that, just to say. Uh, they're, they're modest. Uh, we're talking about fifteen dollar increase for air conditioners, ten dollars for bedding. Um. Five dollars on refrigerators. Two dollars on tires. Five dollars on toilets and sinks and uh, ten dollars on uh, large TVs, okay, because. Some of those TVs, we pay twenty-eight cents a pound for TVs and then some of the TVs outweigh their, their ten dollars, so. We're, we're talking about trying to, to gain that back as well. Now, that's, that's really about all we have to say. Uh, we come before the select board to get our fees approved. Seems like the last time we came, when one of the select members said, well, we should charge more pay and so. We, we, uh, we did that at the time, but we haven't made any changes since then.
Well, I think I was the one who said that and I say it again today. Are you, are they high enough? These charges to cover your costs? Or are we still undercharged?
No, we, no, we did some calculations and we included in, in the fees. We even included uh, the trucking fees that we pay over. Like we, we get charged a, an amount per unit for some things. And we also added on, on several of these things, the amount of freight that, that we would have to pay. For, for such things. For instance, the mattresses, we do forty mattresses. Um, the. Company charges us eighteen dollars a mattress. However, it costs us about twenty-eight dollars a mattress because of the trucking fees. Uh, to send the mattresses, so uh, we're asking, yeah, we're, we're, we're talking about charging thirty dollars per mattress. And I hear anecdotally from people in there that, that that's still one of the cheapest rates around for recycling mattress, so. Um, we are, but we, we would then be making the money back that we spend to have the mattresses picked up. And this is only for the things that we charge fees for. There are a lot of things that we don't charge fees for that uh, would be a separate discussion. Soft furniture, uh, things like that, that, that uh, that, that just go into the uh, compactor.
Yeah, I think there's a table in there, Paul, showing they have the cost is one of the columns in that table.
Yeah, of course, cost, cost for the town, the proposed fee, um, and the increase, yeah. A couple of them don't come up to the cost and, and that uh, couple of the fees and those are, you know, DP, DP, DEP grant eligible. We buy those things. The uh, the compost bins and the uh, the uh, recycling containers, we buy those from the state grant. So we, we can afford to give people a break on that because it's already coming out of their other pocket already.
Okay.
I'll, I'll let Jeremy talk first. I have a quick comment, that's it.
Alright, go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I just want to one, thank Charlie for all the hard work he does on, on the recycling committee. Uh, really fortunate to have him and his committee help run that, the transfer station. Um, al- also just wanted to point out, this, this does uh, help address, you know, one of the prior comments that. Came up in the audit of the transfer station, so um, you know, that, that's good. Um, and the collector's office was also looking to add. Um, a sort of a late payment fee, a, a five-dollar fee for um, those fees that are not paid within thirty days. Um, they about, they do about six hundred of these a year. There's about six hundred of these transactions a year. And about twenty percent of them end up not being paid in a timely fashion. Um, such that the collector's office has to put together letters and mail out letters, sometimes three, three or four times. So they'd like to try to make a, a bit more of an incentive for folks to pay promptly. Um, as you all know, it's fairly easy to do that and you can use. The scan that, the QR code and pay it right on the spot or just stop by town hall to pay, so. But they were looking to, to also include that five-dollar fee. Um, if they have to send out a reminder after thirty days. If it's past due for thirty days and then every thirty days that that fee um, could double if unpaid.
And I, I tended to say you can't leave it here until you bring the money myself.
But there are, there are towns that do that. There are towns that make you go to the, go pay the fee first and then come to the transfer station, but then. You know, people come to the transfer station with their thing and say, no, you have to go to the town hall first and then come back. And maybe, you may find a bunch of them in, on Prospect Street instead, if you.
It might, I know.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm told from the collector's office that they, they have about a hundred percent collection rate because of the diligence sending out the letters, but they. They prefer not to do that if, if they had their choice.
So can I move approval?
Yeah, you're finished, Jeremy?
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I mean, I'll second, but I had a comment, but I guess it doesn't.
Muted second, second from Marion. Um, so uh, anything else you want to add, Sean, or are you okay?
I'm good. Eric was trying to make the comment.
Alright, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I was trying to make a comment before the motion, but I guess at this point. Well. I'll, I'll motion down before, uh, before I cut my comment.
Alright. So let's vote then and then you can uh, uh, comment. Eric?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. Go ahead, Eric.
Now, just that, you know, I, I, I kind of on Paul's note, I thought, yeah, it's, somewhere should we um, predict um. Predict some inflation coming on here, like toilets and sinks. I don't think anyone have a problem paying thirty dollars for. You know, it would be, it's gonna, it could be simply a make it proactive thing like that, but at that point, like I said, Paul made the motion, so let's finish it up. It does feel like.
One of the things we try not to do.
We had, that auditor actually tells us that we should actually increase our fees.
Yeah, one, one of the things we try not to do is appear making a profit because we can't do that either. So.
I get that, but also you look at when inflation has gone up and someone like that.
Yeah.
It's not outrageous and plus if you look at it, toilet sinks are twenty-four to twenty-eight. And I'm simply saying make it thirty, you know what I mean? So I was saying, we're actually at the lower end of that, but it doesn't matter.
The director would have pointed out that it costs ten times more to go pick it up on the side of Prospect Street and no, we don't recover anything. Cause we picked up a lot of stuff. In fact, we got a mattress today that was free of charge for somebody.
But my guy said. Yeah, no, it was a black spring, but yeah, and it was, it was on, it was still in probably good enough shape, so we have to recycle it, so, yeah.
Right.
Yep, and, and I.
You see what, so, and to pay in thirty is worse than twenty-five, like I was thinking my refrigerator forty sounds worse than thirty-five, so I wasn't doing that. And like I said, it's still within the range of what it actually cost us to get rid of it, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't, anyone in Sherburne is going to. Throw a sink on the side of the road to save five dollars, twenty-five to thirty, do you know what I mean?
I don't know.
Other communities are right, when actually you charge higher prices, you, you do see illegal dumping.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I'd also like to, like to thank Tish Gogan for, for the work that she did on this. She, she uh, she did a lot of spreadsheet work and kind of. Kind of was the spark that, that, that got this actually moving again, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted uh, thank Charlie and his whole team for uh, encouraging. Uh, drop, uh, drop off of these large things as a resident of Prospect Street. Uh, now I know that you know what it's like to live on Prospect Street, so that's what I'm trying, thank you.
Good point, Marion, good point. Thank you, Tish, also. Alright, thanks guys. And so um, Jeremy, you're gonna do the next item, which is the special uh, treasure collector position legislation?
Yes, did you vote on that last item?
Yes, they did.
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, yes, you did.
So we're all set, but we have the letter from uh, uh, James, right?
Yeah, next item.
I, I signed it, uh, and we sent it to him. So, so we're all set with that then?
Yes, I might just comment that uh, uh, Jeremy and uh, myself, and I think Dan Sitchell was there. Uh, met with uh, James's administrative assistant uh, this, this week and the, the bit of sort of discouraging. Uh, a comment that he gave us was that these sorts of small special legislation from, from towns. Uh, get, get pushed off and piled up at the legislature, so it may take. Quite a while for this to actually go through at the legislature. Um, you know, many months, so I just want to mention that in case there's any implication. For these uh, positions in the town.
I think we covered that in the last meeting, though, we set it up so that. We have both positions covered right now and in the interim.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape for the interim, um, and you'll see, you know, a proposal reflected in the FY twenty five budget. Um, so what we just need you to, you know, endorse, the the special legislation is included in your packet. Uh, for us to send along to the uh. Uh, Representative Arena DeRosa.
So we need a vote?
Yes, please.
So moved.
I thought we already did that, though, we, where's Diane? Didn't we already, I signed that letter, we sent it to him.
Yeah, yes, you signed the letter, but I think that this is to actually. Send the legislation, I don't think it. You did come in last week and sign.
Was that the letter for the 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 Water District Special Legislation? It was a similar letter.
Oh, okay.
It's the letter that's in our packet I signed, I thought it was the one for the treasure collector, but if not, I'll cup sign it again.
So I'm 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 moving to to uh. Send the legislative. Prose to the general court and to authorize a letter. From Jeff Waldron. In support thereof.
All right.
And I second.
All right. So let's vote, Eric?
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well, and I'll save a stamp and drive to Holliston and hand it to James. We're good. Thank you, everybody. All right, that's good, so um now we're on to the um. Restructure to Route twenty seven, Route sixteen, Sean. And and Jeremy and uh Heidi.
Uh, Heidi as well, so um.
Yep.
We've been approached by the Boston uh Metric Ball and Planning Organization um earlier this year. Um, they gave us a heads up that they're instituting a pilot program, this this may be a one off. Uh, but it it seems like a good opportunity. Um, to to receive um some of the the federal transportation funds that may be coming, that are coming, um, the uh Commonwealth Way. Through the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, the traditionally uh tip projects or transportation improvement plan projects. Uh, are the design for municipality managed projects are all the responsibility of the community, so the community has to raise the design funds. Before they apply to be on the tip for construction funding. Um, this pilot program uh is being put in place because the the MPO, the Boston MPO has seen a seen a decline in the number of projects being requested. Um, at a time when they're gonna be receiving some additional funds. Uh, from the federal government for transportation projects. Um, and they're they're hoping to also in- increase the diversity of of communities that are applying for these funds. Uh, there's several communities that that generally in the Boston area seem to to take advantage of the tip program more than others. So they're hoping this pilot program will will help um help smaller communities that generally don't have. The resources available to put forward design funds. So the they're earmarking four million dollars for federal fiscal year FY twenty five. Uh, for municipalities to apply for design funds, there is an eighty twenty match. Um, where the communities would have to match a twenty percent match, but chapter ninety funds could be used for that match. Um, and it's highly likely, they said, if a project is chosen to be have received design funds. That is very highly likely that it's going to sit well on the tip in future years to receive construction funding. Um. I know the 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 town has has considered in the past. Um, and 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 looked at in the past, the reconstruction of. Twenty seven sixteen from the split. Uh, north to Coolidge Street, that area, that would be what we would suggest could be the application for design funding. Um, I will say, uh. The current mass DOT and their current design standards are different than they were years ago, it's much more context sensitive. And, you know, more in keeping, you know, allowing a a community to have a design that's in keeping with their character. Uh, this program also, the designer would be hired by the the town and overseen by the town of Sherburne. Not mass DOT, that is a reimbursable project, uh. Uh, program where um, just like chapter ninety, but the town would administrate the the design consultant. Um. Let's see, the. Applications are due at the end of December. Um, and actually, the town of Holliston has reached out, they're they're looking to apply for a project. At the end of Whitney Street and sixteen, that intersection in Holliston. Uh, and the MPO suggested that we might partner with them in an application to to have sort of a. Support uh together on it. Um. We probably would be seeking about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in design funds. Um, and likely in the in the future, if this was designed to the town's standards and brought forward. As a tip project, the construction value is probably between six and eight million dollars, um. That would be fully funded through the state and federal. Uh, government, so. Um. We've wanted to get some consensus, the board, if there was something that you wanted us to apply for. Probably going to be fairly competitive, but I think we've got a good application. Um, we would know sometime in March or April if we receive the design funds. As the design, as the MPO board um continues with their their business uh going into the new year. So just wanted to to bring it to the board to see if there was some consensus and support for for moving forward with this. Happy to answer any question.
I think Paul had his hand up first, and he accepts money quite well.
But but not in this case, I I was part of. Got swept up into. This issue like twenty twenty five years ago. It was one of the most divisive issues that has ever hit this community. Um. We turned down three million. Of state money that they were pressing on us, that I had meetings with the. Central planning. Central Transportation Planning Services, DTPS. In Boston, I had meetings with. Mass Highway people, uh, Department of Transportation people. What was unacceptable? Was that that there are standards, there are federal standards, and there are state standards. And. At town meeting when. The voters rejected this project. Uh. The sense was, we would rather spend our own money. And have our our own control. And leave. Route twenty seven. As narrow as is. Which was totally unacceptable to the state. And totally unacceptable, by the way, to Holliston. Because those are the people who come through the town. Head north in the morning and then head south in the evening. Uh. The goal of the state was that, you know, there's a bottleneck in Sherburne. And that's. A mission that they've had for years. To open that up. And they talked about traffic lights. And the proposal, I mean, they had, they had engineered this fully. But there was uh. These uh columns of traffic lights and these big arms that go across. Um. The split. Uh. Widening Route twenty seven. Uh, it just had to be wider. To to. Accomplish the volume of traffic that. The roadway was seeing. In other words, in my discussion with the state and and its engineers. They were saying. There has to be a road there that accommodate X volume of traffic, and this was. A lot's lower number than it is now. And so the end goal is to move that traffic through Sherburne. And moving it through Sherburne means moving it through our downtown area. And instead, the. Sherburne Town Meeting voted. That we wanted a sleepy downtown, we, the people able to walk across the streets. They wanted us to, we, the board of selectmen to pay attention to crosswalks. And to sidewalks. And to have it. And friendly, and to have it friendly for our residents, and if all these people who want to drive fast and. And commute to uh Route nine and Mass Turnpike and all these places that they want to go. Let them go somewhere else. But not through Sherburne. As I say, it was a very divisive issue, it was very polarizing. Uh. People who were good friends ended up being hostile to each other. Just one of those issues that I would not want to see this community go through again. Uh. I know how strong the state felt about this. Sherburne needed to take this money, they would pay for everything, we wouldn't incur a penny. And again, the voters of the town made it clear. They are willing to pay our own tax dollars to keep. Sherburne. The way it is, and to keep it. The sort of the little place that it is. And not just a. A conduit for cars heading north and south. So I'm putting up a big caution and yellow light here. You ought to look at the history. And see what you're getting involved in. Before you go much further with this.
Okay, uh, I think Eric has a comment that'll um maybe supplement that pretty well, but um. I think Marion had her hand up before Eric.
Right, I also was gonna kind of look back at at the history and how contentious it was. Uh, I think part of this, I I would, I kind of hate to turn down money, but. Paul is right, we wanted, we we want to be clear about. Uh, what we what we want our town center to be. And then see if money can be used to make it more like what we want it to be, not less like what we want it to be. So that would be my overall philosophy, so so uh maybe I'll let others go first, but I would be looking carefully at. How much uh, what the criteria are for these improvement projects and how much the town could. Set their own prior, how much we could set our own priorities for the town center before going into it.
They're at least letting us hire the design firm and or manage them instead of them doing it, it sounded like.
But they.
Their parameters.
Right, they have to design to the standards, to the federal and the state standards, no matter what design you hire.
No, I remember, I I wasn't on this like, but I remember your earlier. Incident and the width of the road was a big deal.
Master key has changed their standards um since that time, it's like, like I mentioned, much more context sensitive. Um, you know. Incorporating complete streets and pedestrians friendly, you know. Decorative lights and sidewalks and and, you know, traffic calming measures. Um, you know, away from the the freeway approach to, you know, a village, you know, place making approach.
Exactly, I mean, if we took that approach, and if we were allowed to take that approach, then I would say, let's let's go for it, just to make sure we don't. Let the uh, you know, federal design, road design standards or something throw us off track, because. There are a lot of good things we could do with the downs down, along the complete streets philosophy. And just to make it even a more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And uh, you know, keep everybody safer, there's a lot we could do, so I'm certainly willing to. Uh, support looking into it.
Uh, Sean?
Yeah, I was just gonna make the point, I texted it to someone a minute ago, this is not your nineteen nineties mass DOT. This is the same group of people that gave us signs that tell you to stay four feet away from a bicycle. Uh. There's bike lanes all over the state, we're we're not gonna get bike lanes downtown, but. It there's a lot of difference between the standards then and now, and I and I, they want to point out, and this isn't a dig at anyone, I still have the plans on. In my office, if anyone wants to look at them, but not only did we turn that down. The same brick sidewalks that that you can't wheel a child across in a baby seat, in a in a carriage, there. An abomination of ADA compliance are still in downtown, so we didn't actually use the town money to do anything. Um, it's it's really horrible, it's dangerous, we almost can't clear the snow from the sidewalks, they're so bad. And this town cannot afford to fix downtown, we cannot. There's no chance we can do what we will, what we're gonna get out of this project, so. The best chance we have of ever creating a downtown that we we should be proud of would be a grant like this.
Uh, Eric, I probably should have gone to you first, but go ahead, you you I know have tons of experience on this as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, I found a couple of days ago that uh someone who I work for is applying for these funds as well, so I'm actually gonna abstain for the vote, but I don't, I I thought about it, I do not think I have to recuse myself. And completely step out of the discussion, but I'm gonna be minimal in discussion, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain off the vote. But I just want to simply clarify what Paul said, is that this is not a completely different mass DOT, I mean, completely different. Even in a short time, like the twenty years I've been involved with um with this stuff. You know, they went from saying, you know, our job is to move cars, but. Moving cars is absolutely tertiary to um multimodal and just, you know, um, alternate, alternate transportation, and number one is pedestrian safety. And if there's anything downtown could use pedestrian safety, so. Uh, I, that, I mean. That whole philosophy that from the nineteen nineties is gone, it is completely gone, it's a completely different mass DOT. I feel as though I have to stop short on advising you to actually apply for this grant or not apply for this grant, but, you know. At minimum, I'll say, if you really want to know what mass DOT likes and requires and whatever else, and what these um whole standards are. I mean, talk to a consultant, they know, they're the ones that do this every day. You know, they're not, they're not latching on to some thirty year old memory of something, you know, uh. Whose residents, you know, who are friends and don't talk to each other anymore. It's a different population in Sherburne and as well, so I don't think that we can take that experience back then. And reflect that uh onto our decision tonight, that's all I'll say.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Marion?
I I just need a little clarification, maybe Jeremy can help, um, you you said the the grant application is due in December. That's that's kind of like now, I mean, is it already written and um?
It's due December thirty first. Um, it's a, it's an online application, uh, the Sean, Heidi and I have looked at it, um. We believe we could complete it relatively easily, but. Before spending much effort, we wanted to speak to the board to see if there was some some support to do so, but we believe we could get the application together. Um, being a pilot program, they're actually using. One of their existing uh application portals for it, and. So there's some things in there that we don't need to fill out, we just know not applicable, but. We believe we could get the grant, and if if there was support, but again, didn't want to expend any further effort unless there was some. Some consensus or support from the board to do so.
Right, I think I think uh I certainly would would support it, but I'd I'd like to, you know, be sure that. Uh, I don't know how much detail is required in the application. Is it, do you give a sort of overview of what our goal for the town? Center traffic is, or what?
Um, it it's like a web based form, it's like five pages. Um, and it it's a very, it's fairly basic in that. It's, we're seeking design funds, so the design, the consultant would be the one. You you don't know, the scope of the project really is just limits and.
Mm-hmm.
About it, and um, you know, through a design process is when, you know, you would do. You know, charrettes or or, you know, planning of what it would look like specifically, so the application doesn't require much specifics.
For for overall goals for what what we want in the town center, you know, we spent a lot of time on this on in the master plan. I think it's pretty much along the lines that we're talking about now. Uh, and so you you probably could just lift some language out of there. Uh, it might be helpful, take a look and see if there's something useful there, I'd be happy to take a look at it with you if it would help.
Thank you.
I'm sure it would help, Steven?
Um, yeah, I I guess I definitely also would not want to. Uh, condemn with prejudice the possible uh design based on what things were like in the nineteen nineties, um, I think as. Eric and Jeremy have indicated, um, the standards are quite different now, um, and I do understand that. It was a, if it was a divisive issue and the town voted against, um, but again, the population is very different now. Um, I certainly did not live in town twenty years ago, and I can say. With a high degree of confidence that probably uh none of my um sons, friends and classmates' parents um lived here in town twenty years ago. Um, I know that the argument that we want a sleepy downtown, um, and we want to spend our own money is, it's uh romantic, but. Anybody who has driven through town uh during rush hour knows that 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 ship has sailed. Um, it's not a sleepy downtown, the traffic happens anyways, um, and as Sean indicated, it's not. And as Sean indicated, it's not like we have spent any of our money on doing anything downtown anyways. So I, I think that exploring this makes a lot of sense. You know, my only major question really would be. I think Jeremy, you had indicated we'd be looking at a three to four hundred thousand dollar grant. And I think it was like a twenty percent local match, right? So we'd be looking for about a hundred thousand dollars. So how would we be proposing a fund that would that, would that be out of free cash that we would vote at town meeting or what, where would the hundred thousand come from?
In, in discussing a little bit with Sean, likely we would propose chapter ninety, which would require this to come back to the select board to approve that match. Fortunately, our, the chapter ninety funds for the town of Sherbrooke are increasing due to some, some changes last year. So the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town had been receiving in chapter ninety five zero a year actually will be a little over three hundred thousand. And with the opportunity for, for some other things. So our chapter ninety funds are, are increasing fortunately, which could offset this, this design match.
And I, I know I should probably know this, but were we, were we putting any chapter ninety funds now towards the Maple and Washington project? Or were we not gonna be using any chapter ninety for that now?
I believe we were not anticipating using any chapter ninety at this point, or, or if, if any, very minimal.
Yeah, we got the SNAP grant for that.
Yeah, I just didn't remember if the SNAP basically meant that we wouldn't have to touch chapter ninety for it, or if we would still be needing it or not. But yeah, those, those are my main questions really were the financial things, but I, I think that philosophically, it makes, you know, a lot of sense to, to, to go forward with this.
I think I also, the way I look at it, also, we've done some projects that have sort of with help and other ways, you know, benefited downtown, but now we can integrate them. You know, we're doing the roundabout at Maple and Washington. We now have a railroad crossing with gates. We did the complete street sidewalk on the east side of, you know, Route twenty seven or Route twenty seven sixteen. And even the, the adding the left turn lane to go on Lake Street is, we're all things, but now we're, could do something where we sort of integrate all those parts and pieces in a more contiguous way, it seems like to me. Heidi?
Yes, I guess. I just had a comment that I was thinking we are submitting the proposal, so it's gonna be what we submit to them. And it could, the emphasis would be on pedestrian traffic safety and those type of features, I think, in this. So I kind of feel we're driving what we're willing to submit. They're gonna come back and say yes or no, and we can have further discussions. But I think just for today to get the support to try and move forward on what the town would like incorporating the master plan would be my suggestion.
So could I suggest? And I'm willing to support this. If we buy what Heidi just said and what Marion said earlier, that we put in the application, not a general statement, you know, give us money so we can do traffic improvements, but specifically say upfront that we want to preserve the the village atmosphere and not a, and not a freeway, not a highway. Something like that. Make it clear upfront so that they know what we're looking for. And, and then see what they say. If you're willing to do that, then I'm willing to, to give this a try.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion, Paul?
Yes, I, I, I move that we submit an application that would define a project that's consistent with the master plan. The master plan's visions downtown.
Sounds good to me. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Steven? Marion?
I.
Paul?
All right.
And I am I as well, and Eric is, I think this is an abstain, not an abstain.
Yeah, so it's actually gonna have a third digit. It's not gonna like the other ones, by the way. It's gonna actually have a third.
All right, sounds good. Thanks for covering that, Jeremy, and for your, thanks to both of you for your upcoming work on preparing it. So, but you're still up on the capital plan, capital budget. Now, I know you while we were all at planning board, you were at capital budget committee, I think.
Yes. I just wanted to give a, a kind of a, just a brief intro. I have a couple of slides to show you. In, in certainly in, on coming meetings, we can have some more detailed discussions and actually have the project champions come before you and speak to your project, speak to their projects. But since the, you know, the six year capital improvement plan was, was put together and published, I just wanted to give you an overview, a high level look at it. And just sort of as a primer for some future conversations and just wanted to point out some, some high points in it. I'll go fairly quickly through these. There's only a handful. And they're actually different from the, the capital improvement plan, which was emailed out, out to you in advisory and the capital budget committee. It's also posted on the town's website. There's a news, news item as well with that on the town's website. So it's, the full plan is available out on the town's website, but just some high level looks at it. This year, we, we assisted the capital budget committee in compiling, on compiling the six year plan. So prior to submitting anything, the capital budget committee, town administration, Deb, myself, Diane helped put together the capital plan from information provided by department heads, boards, committees, all of those typically submitting information. We helped compile it to provide to the capital budget committee. And they've started discussing that this week. They actually met with police and fire to talk specifics and also on, on their capital request for twenty five, but also talked about the, the six year plan in general. The six year plan covers FY twenty five to FY thirty. So it includes this coming, you know, request this coming town meeting. In entirety, there's fifty five projects. There is some caveats. There's a placeholder for a couple of school projects, like the Pine Hill Elementary Cooling. It's identified in the capital plan. However, there's no cost associated with that yet, since the school department's still studying that. And also, there's three years that the, the school department have not yet approved in their capital plan. So FY twenty eight to thirty have not been, for school department requests are not incorporated into the plan as of yet, but we hope to soon. Overall, the six year plan includes about fifteen million dollars in capital projects. There is some tentative or ideas for funding included, including tax levy borrowing, free cash. And also a fair amount of, of the projects for FY twenty five are also covered by, by grants. So included in this is also the, the grant funding we've received for the, the roundabout, Washington Maple. So, you know, it's eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards this fifteen million. There's over a million and a half in chapter ninety funds that are part of that fifteen million. So, you know, that is more than two, two and a half million dollars of other non-local funds that are part of that fifteen million. Here's just a, a quick, an overview of the capital request by department value and by the category of project. A couple of notes on the bottom again, the public works and the infrastructure category again includes the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state grants and one and a half million in chapter ninety. So, you know, the public works numbers shown here do include the, you know, non-local funding just to, to level set. And again, the, the schools department requests and the facilities repair and replacement category do not include the Pine Hill Elementary School Cooling Project. Nor does it include fiscal years twenty eight to thirty. So there's three years of school department capital request not included as of yet. A capital plan wouldn't be complete without talking about how to fund it. So traditionally, there is debt that can fund capital project. There's free cash that could fund capital projects. If the town had a, a vibrant or a, a, a capital stabilization fund that actually had an influx of money, that would be an ongoing source of funds. But thanks to Pam, Pam, our interim treasurer, put this together using the, the six year plan, those that are tagged for borrowing. She's calculated what that may be by way of impact on the town's debt service. So on this chart here, gray is the existing long-term debt that the town holds. The debt service we pay per year is what's on a vertical axis and a fiscal year on the horizontal. Gray is existing long-term debt for existing projects that have been completed. The greenish color is existing short-term borrowing or bands, bond anticipation notes that the town holds that at some point may be converted to, to long-term borrowing. And the dark blue is the impact of, on our debt service for the six year plan. There, there's some mountains here. So this proposal is not ideal from a debt service perspective. Ideally, we, we will need to work on the requests and when they occur to prioritize them so that this debt mountain is not a mountain. It's more of a hill and rounded off to something that's more manageable for the community. The numbers that are shown here of just above the dark color are actually the, the net increase in debt service per year that the capital plan would translate to. So as you can see, there's some work here in this draft plan. There's some work here to, for the capital budget committee that that, you know, when projects may be the most appropriate to be undertaken for the community so that we don't see a big spike in, in, in expenses year over year. And I mentioned free cash is another source of funds for, for the capital plan. Here's the history of our certified free cash. That's, the certified free cash is shown in that, that green teal color. Our free cash was just certified at two point seven million for, for the, the close of, or for going into FY twenty four, which is similar to what, the way it turned and was certified for the previous year. The dark blue color shows what the town's annual spending on capital has been by free cash. And then there's some summary here of the average free cash has been certified at a little over two million. And on average, the town has used three hundred thousand dollars of free cash towards capital. The six year capital plan has used that free cash, that three hundred thousand dollars is more or less the target every year for, for for paying for capital. Also, wanted to include sort of a, a brief summary of ARPA funds. None of these ARPA projects are included in the five, the six year capital plan. However, ARPA funds are a source of potential funding for capital projects. So I just wanted to remind the select board of where we stand by way of our ARPA funds. The town received one point three million. The select board has allocated just over one million. That's allocated. That's not actual spend, actual spend as of. I think Deb's last reconciliation was about five hundred thousand was actual spend. So there's five hundred thousand dollars allocated that hasn't yet to be expended. And there is still two hundred and forty thousand dollars of unallocated funds that the select board have not yet committed to any projects. Some of that has been earmarked towards rural fields. Some is earmarked towards, I believe, the farm pond access and stormwater. But the board has yet to, to actually formally vote to allocate those funds for use. And then down on the bottom, I just wanted to highlight some of the earmarks, the state earmarks we've been fortunate to receive in the, the recent past that, that also helped contribute towards some, some capital projects.
Before you go from that, I was just gonna say that we, in terms of sources, you know, we can push them. It's not a, a huge amount, but the excess deficiency was at one point up to one point six million dollars in the school. So that's one other source of funds. And also the school has the ability to borrow also. If they dislike, where we built the middle school, they, they borrowed at the regional school level.
And just to, to leave you with this, this is a summary of what might be requested at the town meeting coming up in the spring. So this is a summary of the FY twenty five requests as submitted by department heads and, and the various committees divided by department with the department listing on the left a listing of, of their projects in the middle and then the sum of, of their requests on the right. This, this is not divided out by, by free cash or debt. It is in the plan, but on this slide, it's not. And as you can see, there's a, there's a placeholder, there's a question mark as far as how much the, the Pine Hill School Cooling System project might cost. But again, that's the school department's in the midst of a study of that. And we've put a placeholder in. So the select board requests include of the farm, road, farm pond water base plan is a supplemental amount of about thirty thousand dollars. We need to complete that study. Hopefully, we'll be, we'll be submitting for some grant funding through the MVP program. So that might fall off of our successful in getting those funds. That might fall off the capital plan, but the select board is also shown is, is the, the larger project is the library space fit out for the historical society and the library basement. We're carrying eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a potential cost for that. Sean is working with an OPM to, to come up with some refined cost estimates. So that eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be refined in the, in the coming weeks. But again, just wanted to leave you with this summary and we'll, we'll certainly bring back the champions of these projects to help explain them in more detail to the select board.
And Jeremy, the number for the regional schools, I assume that is Sherbrooke's share, not the total?
That's correct. That's, that's assuming last year's formula is the same. It's gonna be pretty much similar this year, but yes, that is Sherbrooke's share of the regional schools.
Do I have a question?
Go ahead, Paul.
So if you go back to the chart that had the debt service for a moment, Jeremy, there. But I'm, I'm looking at that visually and from what I've sat through in some of the eight communities I represent. If you move that to the right by about an inch, you would have more of a plateau at the top rather than that increase. So is there a way that we could manage that dark blue to be more spaced out in time? And that way, the gray would have dropped further down providing room for the blue.
Yep, I, I'm hopeful that the discussions before the capital budget committee with the requesters of these projects will help translate into just what you said, Paul, that smoothing of that, that future debt to be more manageable. And this, this great debt model that Pam put together is gonna be very useful in that we can model different scenarios. We can move one project and see what it looks like on, on this model. So this is gonna be very helpful in that, that, those ongoing discussions with capital budget.
Yeah, I'd like to see more of a plateau at the top rather than these spikes that look like a pretty.
We can, we can do that. Did I change this thing?
Looks like significant increases in our debt and debt is probably gonna be excluded debt, and that means our taxes are gonna go up to pay for it all. Rather, I'd like to see it more gradual.
I mean, ultimately, I think, Paul, that's sort of the job of the capital budget and advisory committees is to look at all those things and kind of determine what can get put off and what, and what really can't. One thing I also want to point out, and this is gonna be sort of the, the drumbeat that I hit whenever I can, is that if you look around probably in that twenty thirty three to twenty thirty five range, again, I, I'm gonna keep saying this, but we probably are gonna need a new elementary Again, I I'm going to keep saying this, but we probably are going to need a new elementary school and it's probably going to be in around that timeframe that that that's going to need to happen. So there's going to be a big spike after twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-five, probably. So keep that in mind as you look at these sorts of projections.
And I just want to say, you know, because George isn't here, to remind Paul, the exclusion has nothing to do with taxes going up and down. I don't want taxes to go up, don't spend the money.
That's that's true. No matter how you pay for it, the taxes are going to go up.
Well, and I think to your point, though, Stephen, there's money in here to replace the Pine Hill roof and other things too. So we may have to look at whether we need to limp along a little bit more in Pine Hill School and not put a million-two roof on it or something if we're going to replace it in five years or whatever. So I think that there's a lot of play in different ways. We've seen that we were going to be replacing different school roofs for the last five years and we haven't replaced any yet. So they typically do reassess those conditions in looking at it.
Believe the school committee is pushed out, the Pine Hill School roof. I think they had programmed a million dollars. And it was to be for FY twenty-five, they pushed it to FY twenty-six, but it is included in in. So it is reflected in the overall number.
Yeah, that's what I assume, but if they're really thinking of replacing the school in twenty thirty-two or whatever, we might have to rethink that.
Yeah.
There may be some limp along costs associated with that, but.
Yeah, well, the HVAC system just caught fire, right? So.
It did as a minor fire, but it's also wooden, it's a wooden roof. Okay, so it's definitely.
That was actually caused from the electrical grid caused that more than the actual equipment there at Pine Hill.
That was, yeah.
One of the three phases went and it did something inadvertent and then the rooftop unit catching it on fire, but it was caused from external.
Look, this way, the old unit was easy to fix. If that was a brand-new unit, it would have had a bunch of electronics that would have blown up on.
Yeah. It's like if you have an accident in your new electric vehicle, you're going to be replacing bumpers, sensors and cameras all over the place. Not dense.
I do have an actual question is, Paul, are you all set with your question?
Yeah, that, go ahead.
First of all, is it more to the presentation or is it time to ask questions? Because my question may be answered later.
I'm concluded. That's all I wanted to bring to the voyage attention. So happy to answer any question.
I just had, I had trouble with the printouts and what was emailed, reading the actual capital plan. Do you have the plan that we can see a bit better? The actual like.
I couldn't read it at all. It's ultra-fine print.
And I tried looking. I'm revealing the fact that I didn't wait till this afternoon to look at it.
Yep.
I couldn't read it either.
Because, so I'll give my global concern and just, you know, I gave Jeremy the same concern a couple of days ago. And I've built, I mean, I actually framed DPW's first tenure plan. I mean, I know, I definitely know how to build the plans and what's in them and so on. My concern is every year what get what the request that we asked for, it's like three times what's on the actual capital plan. And, you know, I think it's it's okay if you get like two things on there that you didn't foresee, you know what I mean? But the, and I also get that when you're five years out, it's somewhat fuzzy. But you should at least have like two or three years out that's pretty accurate. It should reflect this march down what's requested each year. And it seems like, you know, this much is shown on the five-year CIP. And then we ask for this much when that year comes around. And I just want to make sure that we're really thoroughly looking at vehicles, facilities. And I think we've done a good job with the with the roadway infrastructure stuff and things like that. But I want to make sure all that stuff is on that plan and well thought out. It's not all sudden like, you know, okay, in five, in three years, we're going to ask for eight hundred thousand. Then three years comes around, we need two point four million. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's pretty close. It is pretty close. Each year, we at least look two years out, make sure it's reasonable fine, predict what we want to do. There's no vehicles, you know, vehicles are on there, vehicles is the single most easy thing to predict. It really is. Yeah, every now and then one just breaks and blows up out of nowhere. But for the most part, you got like a twelve to fifteen-year lifespan or cop cars, maybe a ten-year lifespan. And let's go to it and plug it in. It's probably the easiest thing to put on a capital plan. So that's the only thing I want to make sure that the capital plan is reasonably thorough and each year there's no more than a couple of things unforeseeable that's that wasn't foreseen or requested on that year. That's my only comment.
I just add to that one thing that's helped us, I think, of the facilities is doing those onsite insight reports because they give you a five-year capital plan and actually a maintenance operations plan too, when they, when we have the buildings done. So I think that the school started that and then we adopted it for other builders in town. So I think that's helped on the facility side. All right, thank you, Jeremy. Is that covered? I don't see any more raised hands. Marian's thinking pretty hard though, but she's muted. So I don't know. You got to unmute Marian.
Again, just a quick comment to Jeremy. I thought his introduction to the capital plan was was really good. I like the way this was laid out. Going through the specific projects. I mean, I like the idea of prioritizing the way you did in your introduction. But as we go through the specific projects, I didn't quite see the priorities there, but I guess that's what we work out later. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Anyway, I thought it was a good job.
Thank you.
And this is also a development, I think, too, because, you know, we used to not get the capital projects until January or February. So this also reflects the capital budget accelerating the schedule for submittals, I think, too.
And I think to Eric's point, I know when I the first year that I was on capital budget committee, which was probably three, four years ago. I mean, there was very little capital improvement plan in terms of like a five-year projection to speak of, you know, the schools had it. I think the police had like a vehicle plan and, you know, I think the the fire chief knew when he was going to need new apparatus, but that was that was pretty much it for in terms of a five-year plan. And so I think capital budget has been working on trying to get that from each of the major department heads. And so hopefully, moving forward, the capital improvement plan will, you won't have a three X ballooning of the the capital plan in the year of, hopefully.
Okay, that sounds good. Sean made a good point in the chat because you can incur more costs by deferred, both in delayed construction costs, but probably in limp along costs if you have to do more maintenance than is necessary instead of repl. We do have a bad habit in town of not maintaining things. So our capital plan is really a reflection of not maintaining things sometimes too in our operating budget. All right. Sounds good, Jeremy. Thanks for the update, though.
You're welcome.
And the next item is, are you also going to handle the meeting scheduling recordings minutes policy?
Yeah, this is just wanted to bring this up to the board in that the current policy, which was instituted by the select board, was in July two thousand twenty-one. Kind of in in the pandemic, but early pandemic. Since then, we've made a lot of strides to train folks on the use of hybrid equipment, using the Zoom equipment. And also we have now five different meeting spaces within town, public meeting spaces that have the hybrid technology. That, you know, the select board meeting room, the library, boardroom, police station, DPW meeting room. All have the capabilities to do a hybrid meeting, in-person meeting with a Zoom and a virtual component. The board back in two thousand twenty-one issued the policy, it's in your, in your, in your handout. And it was sort of sent out to all the various boards and committees via this email. It's included in your handout. It essentially required the select board zoning board of appeals and conservation commission to follow the policy and recommended strongly, I guess, the board of health and the planning board to also follow. But given the increased access to technology and our more comfort using it. Just thought the select board might want to think of revisiting this policy and if they do, I'm happy to work with one or two of you on on redrafting the policy to bring it back to the board, but I wanted to bring it forward for for your discussion.
So if I could on that.
Sure, Paul, go ahead.
The reason why some boards were identified as being required to do things and other boards were being encouraged is because some boards were appointed by the board of selectmen and therefore we had, we felt we had some jurisdiction over them. Whereas the boards, like the planning board and the board of health are separately elected officials who are responsible to the voters. And we didn't feel appropriate for us to be strong-arming them and telling them what they had to do. Instead trying to treat them as as respected elected officials equal to to us as elected officials. And so we asked them to. And I'm thinking that we should continue that tenor. Yeah, I would, I would like to see good access to board and planning. But I think the way to do it is through the town administrator through talking, through asking. But not trying to rewrite this into I mean, the only way to go to rewrite this is to try to make something mandatory. I, I, I think that goes too far.
Yeah, I I concur with you on that, Paul. Let's see what Marian and Stephen say.
Yeah, I, I, I respect that opinion totally. I see that, you know, legally it makes sense. But operationally, I don't think it works well for the town. And I think as the planning board, as, sorry, as the select board. We should really have the interests of the people of the town in mind. And what we hear is that, that is that they they want access to our regulatory boards. And I think there's, I can't think of any reason that a board would not want to allow access. I mean, before you had to go to town hall, but now that it's no longer necessary to go to town hall to be present and interact and participate in a meeting. Those days are gone. That's no longer really relevant. Now to be present and participate. You can, you could be in person or very easily you could be on Zoom. And just as we do with select board and and some of the other boards have been doing consistently, including board of health, even though they're not required. Even though, you know, we respect that they were elected by the town. Does the town, does the public as a whole have the have a way to require boards to do what what they require them to do for for equal access? They really don't, except every three years at the ballot box. And I think unless the regulatory board has has a good reason. And it's so easy to hook up to the big screen. And incidentally, with good directions on the wall there, it would be even easier. That's, that's another, another discussion. But I, I don't think, I think it's reasonable for the select board to take the part of the people of the town and say, you know, these, these meetings should be accessible. They're meant to be accessible. A public meeting is meant to be accessible. Not just being able to watch it maybe later if it's recorded. If it's not recorded, you can't. So I don't know exactly where we would come down as far as, you know, making it a mandate or requiring it, but I think we could make it a clear policy. And then hope that the regulatory boards all all comply. Or if they can't.
There is, just speaking as a town council, there is a way to make it mandatory.
Yeah.
That is, you go to town meeting with a warrant article and you adopt the bylaw that applies to everybody. And you leave it up to the voters who are ultimately our bosses of all other elected officials. And you ask the voters, do they want this in the town? And are they willing to pay for any associated costs that might go with it to make sure it happens? That's where that decision should be made. If you're talking about make that happen on behalf of the people, let the people do that. I'm talking a different thing, which is us as a board of selectmen trying to flex our muscles with other boards. Another alternative is to do it charter commission and have those other boards. Like in many towns, the planning board be appointed by the board of selectmen or the board of health appointed by the board of selectmen, not have them elected. And then you've got the control that you want to be able to acquire this stuff. But given where we are in this town and how welcome we are to have people stepping forward to run for these offices and to do this work. I just don't feel as I as an individual selectman or the board as as a group of five individuals should be trying to boss around other people. So if you care and I assume you do care that this become mandatory. Let's do a warrant article and ask the people what they want to do.
I'd be in favor of that. I think that is a good answer. Thanks, Paul.
All right, let's go. I think Eric had his hand up first, I think.
No, I literally was going to say the same thing Paul did. I just had the hand up and I didn't jump in, but I literally was going to say that town meeting warrant article is the only way to actually really make it fair among the elected boards. Other than that. I guess since I have, since I have the floor, I'll ask one other thing. For those boards that fall under the board of selectmen, have they been reasonably compliant? Anyone can answer that. I think they have, but have they been reasonable compliance? I do remember those little snafu where actually, we actually made this vote. There was one board that wasn't recording. We can, they came, the chair came before us. We asked him why not? He said, kind of gave the same excuse he gave last time, but I think that's been sorted out since then. Since then, as, as, as the boards that fall under the board of selectmen have been reasonably compliant with this, does anyone know? Jerry might not know, but what's that?
They have, yes.
Good.
Which board is that, Jeremy?
The ZVA and the conservation commission. They generally have virtual meetings and record them and those recordings go to Dover Sherburne TV.
And the other boards don't need to be recorded, but I think, yeah, bring it to the people. Bring it to the town.
And we also need to define it. I know you're next, Stephen, but we need to find it better because you see, we used to record them all previously by hiring Dover Sherburne Cable TV to film certain meetings, including the select board of the board of health. All their meetings were recorded by Rick and then posted on YouTube pre-Zoom days. So there's another option if people don't want to have Zoom for some reason that we we have to decide if it's acceptable to have them be filmed by Dover Sherburne Cable TV. Because the advantage of that is, you know, it's still recorded and it can be viewed on TV if people don't have good internet access or don't feel comfortable with Zoom. The advantage of Zoom is that then people can participate. The problem with the cable TV is it's a one-way view and you can still see it at a later date. But you can't ask questions as you can on Zoom. So there's pros and cons, but if we are going to make a warrant article, we would have to also develop the proper language for the article, which may be more complicated than it seems with the different options.
Yeah, you need to have like exceptions as well. You know, I mean, there's certain things we have like HR hearings, which, you know, our executive session and stuff like that, we just get kind of.
Yeah.
We're able to handle it. So.
Well, we are, but we're also able to sort of change things on the fly, which we do often, like, and we've also had some trouble with the hybrid technology too. So. Anyway, I don't, we need to believe belabor that now. So Stephen?
Yeah, I just want to say that I
Um, yeah, I just want to say that I, I, I mean, I agree with Marion, uh, in, in principle in terms of. Um, I believe that, uh, uh. Really that, that it should apply to, um, all of the boards, certainly all of the regulatory boards, um. You know, personally, in my mind, I don't really, uh, draw a major distinction between the ZBA and CONCOM versus Board of Health and. Planning Board on this issue. Um, I don't, I don't view. ZBA and CONCOM as somehow subservient just because we appoint to them, you know, I. I don't, I don't tell the ZBA how to regulate. I don't tell the CONCOM how to regulate. I think we're just setting a policy for. Meeting access. I think as the chief executive body of the town, that's within our authority. Um, I think it's. Really within our responsibility, right? Um, we're not, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm trying to, uh, restrict somebody's personal freedoms. Uh, we're telling a town employee or a board. That, um, as a open public meeting, this is what you really should do. Um, so, you know, also as Marion suggested, uh, you know. Some boards may be elected, but those electors don't, they don't have the power to require. That board to do a, a particular thing. We're really the only body in town that would have that power, you know? I think if you want to make it something that you bring to town meeting as a bylaw, then, then so be it. I, you know, I, I, whatever mechanism you. Would prefer, um, to, uh, to make it official, I would be in support of. I would, I would say that again, I do not view the ZBA and CONCOM as being somehow categorically different, um. On this topic than, uh, Board of Health and Planning Board. So I would suggest. Then we should retract our current policy that requires ZBA and CONCOM to do it, right? Because if it's, uh. Somehow restricting somebody's freedom, then well, uh, we, we shouldn't restrict some boards and not others. It should be the same across, across all of them.
Can I respond to that?
Uh, yeah, sure. Go ahead, Paul.
So I would ask. How would you enforce? Let's say there's a board, elected board. I don't know, the Board of Health, and they say, no, that. How would? The five of us. Make them do it. And I would suggest to you, there is no legal way for us to make them do it. Compare that to. This. If we say to the ZBA, you are required to do this and they don't do that. Then we don't have to reappoint them. That's the difference. One. It's. Possibly. That's that I work for, don't enact things that you can't enforce. Like there was a, a proposal that nobody shall disparage. Anyone else who works for the town. There will be no disparage. And I ask, what, how are you going to enforce that? It's, it, are you talking about putting a billboard up that you can see? What about rolling the eyes? And then if somebody rolls their eyes as a form of disparagement. How do you enforce? This requirement? So rather than just adopting things. That you can't enforce. Here, make it enforceable. Or don't do it.
Thanks, Paul. Sean?
Well, I don't often do this, but I'm gonna tonight. I'll put the other hat on. As a former selectman, and I would have said this while I was sitting at the table, you guys are the policymakers. And I think. It's your duty to make a policy. It's not the Board of Health's duty to make a policy on the meetings and I, and I, I, it's kind of polar. Opposite of what Paul just said, but I think you should have a policy. Let them violate it. Go ahead. Let them just blatantly violate it. Maybe you need to bring it to town meeting. I think it's a ridiculous thing to ta- bring to town meeting. I think there should just be a policy on what open meetings look like in town. And the, and the few boards that are, that, that choose to violate that. Then I, I think they look ridiculous. And then the voters can speak, but. We were like a year late to the table with hybrid meetings and shame on us for being that way, but we were, but we're there now. And we have the ability to record every meeting. Most of them are anyway, because they're on Zoom. If somebody has a Zoom meeting and they're not recording them, shame on them. Because people should be able to watch them later. People should be able to participate. And it's been an issue with a lot of people lately because they've come to a custom to be able to participate in meetings. And then all of a sudden someone has a in-person meeting. Six people show up and forty people think, sit at home and try to log in and go, oh, there's no Zoom link. It's, it, there's no excuse for that. I'm sorry, there's just no excuse. These are things that matter to people and, and lives are different than they were four years ago. So I think you guys should just make a poll, just amend this policy. And. Somebody made a comment before that th- there's different circumstances. Well, you can't bring all those circumstances to town meeting, but you can, you can keep tweaking that policy. And we can keep working on the technology and how, how it works, but. I, I don't think this should be just boards rampant out there doing whatever the heck they want, showing up at town meeting, at Town Hall and having meetings that. The room's too small for and no one can participate and.
Well, I, 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 I'm. Uh, I'm actually exactly where Sean is, but. Uh, I respect what Paul said about being legal. But on the other hand, I think we run into legal problems by, by not. Having a policy. Because, you know, we do hear complaints about, you know, why was this meeting not open? Why was it not recorded, et cetera, et cetera? And I, I think we're, we're, we're much better off. Uh, having a policy of transparency of all our regulatory boards.
Yeah, and, and I, just to. Piggyback on that point, Marion, um. I, I do hear complaints from, um, various members of the public when, um, certain meetings are not recorded and are not Zoom or hybrid, um. And Paul, I know you love to talk about how, um, you know, we are responsible to the, uh, to the voters and, uh, so that's. That's what I'm, I, that's what I would say that we should be doing now is that we should be listening to the concerns of the voters who say. Um, they don't like it when meetings are now, uh, in person and, uh, not recorded and not hybrid and. I, I think that it's appropriate for us to set a policy, so. Um, that's, that's where I am, um, you know, and if. If the rest of the board would prefer to bring it to town meeting, I guess I would be on board with that, but if, if the rest of the board would be in favor of setting a policy. Um, ourselves, I would be very much in favor of that.
I don't think we would, i- if we were to set a policy. I don't think that we would, uh, get. Blowback from the citizens of the town. For setting that policy. I think we would get a lot of support from the citizens of, citizens of the town. It's just a, for me, a more. Straightforward and less sort of. Convoluted way to do it than going to town meeting.
I like the policy idea. I like that approach. Just gonna throw it out there. I'd raise my hand if people just talk over me anyway. Sorry. No, I like the policy idea.
I can turn the recorder off if you want.
And then honestly, I like the policy idea because then people, you know what? It's up to the voters. So let's say make a policy and an independently voter breaks that policy. Then they decide if that's important to them or not. I like that idea.
Well, I'm, I, I, I'm still more in favor of not having a policy, but just having a, uh. Agreement with the boards. I mean, I, I don't know that. You know, vast majority of boards are already complying and, and doing it. So I think it's, to me. I think it's overregulation is what my sense is. I think we can just, uh, if they're boards that we feel are not, uh. Recognizing the benefits of, it's not just recording, it's, uh, actually being able to participate remotely is huge. If you think. Not only senior citizens can participate easier now, they don't have to drive to Town Hall, but I've been. You know, on the road and done a bunch of meetings that I would have had to miss otherwise with, I was out of, uh, out of the Boston area. So I think we, we, I just think. I'm not sure policy is the answer because when we would have to, we're gonna have to define all the different aspects of the policy and if there's how exceptions are handled, like. I, I don't think we have many instances where we're not already doing it. And so I, I. I, I'm not sure policy versus just managing the various boards. Uh, through our influence would be adequate in my view.
Well, um, I don't think a policy would upset anyone. Except for maybe a board that didn't want to comply for some reason. And if they don't want to comply, then, uh, they're not going to comply. So, uh. You know, I, I, I don't know. I don't think it's.
I know, what's the policy gonna do then? I mean, most of the people are already, I think, following more or less what we would probably put into a policy.
Well, they're not. That's probably, that's why it's coming up right now because they're not.
Well, do we want to, does someone want to make a motion? What do you want to do? Do you want to evaluate it further? I mean, if we decide that we want to make a policy, then we're gonna have to draft the policy.
Why don't we try? Your approach, Jeff, first. See if it works. If it doesn't work. Then do something more. But.
So. Yeah.
Quest to be lost by talking to the particular. Board or commission that isn't following it. And doing a little education on. The advantages. How it can be done. And see if we can get voluntary compliance.
I'd like to hear what Sean has to say.
Yep. No, Sean.
Why is that, why is that different than yesterday?
Yesterday?
What are you, what are you gonna do different than you did yesterday right now with that suggestion? Planning Board had a meeting yesterday.
Yeah.
Okay. Was it Zoom?
No.
Was it hybrid? No. Was it recorded? No, except by law merchants.
Birds just didn't record it, yes.
So why don't you just make a policy and then the chair can explain in public comment every meeting why he doesn't want to do that?
Well. I, I've.
Sorry to make it too obvious, but that's what you're talking about. And it's very important meetings that people are missing.
So if it is just one board that we think there's an issue with, maybe we do send some kind of communication to that one board. Cause to some extent, you know, I mean, are we making a broad rule just for like, you know, one outlier type of thing? Cause you are right. Board of Health has been good with this stuff. They really have, you know, and so, I mean.
That, that's factually true and I've already had. Two, two-hour meetings with.
Well, because of those meetings that you've had with. The board in question, Jeff, that I'm thinking we might need a policy. Uh, because, you know, it, it, it didn't change.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of, uh, education about the advantages of, uh, uh, hybrid meetings. I think. Anyone who chooses not to knows exactly what they're doing. You know, and it's, and the thing is, it's like, we already have a po- policy in place, right? I mean, the. The board, I mean, before I was on the board, but you know, this board drafted a policy and put it in place for. Basically the majority of other, uh, boards and committees in town. So I think it's not, it's not unprecedented. All, all we're doing is. Saying, well, let's just extend the policy to include the elected boards as well.
Well, that's, yeah, that's. Changing the policy.
It's changing, right.
Policy, yeah.
Right, but I don't, I don't, I don't see it as a overreach and overregulation. I mean, it's. We're already regulating them, you know, and it's, you're, you're just changing the classification of which boards we're regulating to be all of them.
Yeah, okay.
I get, I get Jeff's point, I have to jump in, but we're kind of making, we're doing something broad and we're really targeting one, one individual, one. Entity. Maybe it is worth just sending a direct letter. Either from our chair to their chair or from our administrator to their administrator, something like that. Just saying, hey, you know, we, um. It's been standard practice. We've been doing things a certain way here. We understand that you've been varying away from that way. We encourage you for the sake of transparency and blah, 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 blah. And then see what reaction comes from that. And if there's pushback from that. Then maybe we take it to whatever the next level is.
I agree with that.
I can go along with that.
I can live with that, but, but not forever.
Understood, understood. Now, I think, I think, cause you know, the boards and committees composition has changed, so it could be, you know, someone steps down and that board changes and another board changes, so.
Yeah, that's why.
I, I just, I just think that we can handle it without. Having more, um. Rigmarole, just if we just. I- if you're saying we exert influence over these boards, then that's what we really need to do is exert that influence. Elected or appointed.
So if I remember correctly, the initial, um, um, email from David Williams, who had went out, actually was a result of something very similar. We had a board that was a board, that's one, I hate to use that word, but you know what I mean? That you know, we appointed, and it basically like, you know, had these issues, we're not recording. We asked, we kind of implied that they should. And then we directly said, you need to do this and they still didn't do it. And then we actually created a policy or whatever. We created whatever David issued right here. It was a result of escalation and repeated refusal to actually do recordings. And then. You know what? There was a change of kind of, there's a little turnover there and then things are great. You know, things have been very transparent. And I think the new group in charge is also, not that anyone wasn't, but. I think it's, um, it's been that way. So I mean, it's just the nature of things. Maybe this to handle this as an initial one-off. I actually personally. Have confidence. In this, uh, current entity we're talking about. And I think if we did some direct communication, I actually do believe it's a change. And that that's my personal thought. It's up to them to prove me wrong.
I'd like to have just a clear policy for everyone. So when there's change in, in changes in turnover. Which we can't predict right now. Uh, it could be twenty years from now. That, uh, will, the public will be. Assured of transparency.
Yeah, I do agree with that as well because I, I do think that it is, you know, basically universally a positive for meetings to be. Uh, more accessible and then recorded, you know, and again, one of the. Currently, uh, you know, very open boards may change and turn into a board that chooses not to and. It, it would be nice to have a, a pre-existing policy already in place on that. Again, I think it's. It's, uh, it's not about us, uh, trying to, uh, strong-arm people. I think it's really just. Um, in support of openness, transparency and public access to meetings, which I, I don't, I don't see the problem with that.
If you want a permanent. Future. Transparency, you need a bylaw. Because this board could change. And while we're all in favor of doing these things today. Five years from now. We could have a different Board of Selectmen and they may decide, hey, secrecy is the way we want to go. It's too much, uh. Public involvement. Why should it depend on us? And that composition of our board? If you want to have a permanent. Board. The bylaw is the only way to go.
Oh, well, I, I don't know. Last time, Paul, it was done with just a, a policy letter from the town administrator to all the boards.
But it didn't include, it didn't include the elected boards.
Uh, no, they didn't, but they couldn't include the boards, uh, this time. My, my point was just, it was, it was a policy letter. It wasn't brought. To town meeting as a bylaw or anything like that.
Right, but it's not permanent. Paul said we can change anytime.
That's right. Well, the, maybe the technology will change too. So, you know, at least it would. Get us all on the same page for now.
Well, we all talking to our Apple watches in the, in the dark, I think, before. All right. Well, I think we beat this one. I, I, I say, well, we can always revisit this too. I don't, I don't know that. I mean. The problem with a, a warrant article is that. You know, you're gonna have. Whatever we set the quiet, fifty people deciding what the whole town does too. And the same fifty people are already, uh, mainly town employees or board members already, so.
Well, I, I'm still in favor of us, uh, putting together a policy, but in the interim. We can discuss this once again. I don't think we're gonna reach consensus tonight. We could discuss it again, but in the interim. It would be good for. One of us. To, uh, talk to the board chairs and just let them know that this is important.
Yep.
Great. It's a good idea.
I'll, I'll, I'll nominate myself to be the one of us. How about that?
Yeah, it can't be, that's all.
All right. All right. We're once again in violent agreements. So, um. There, we're finished with that and now, uh. The opening of the warrant, do we want to do that tonight or do we want to defer that? Should we open it tonight? We have that on the agenda.
So I move that we open the warrant.
I second.
Okay, do we need to have any discussion, Paul, or? In other words, do we like?
There's no reason not to, is there?
No, but, but do we need to have like the dates? Like, are we, are we gonna change? Like last year, I think we. Like the dates, like, are we, are we gonna change? Like last year, I think we sets. For the fall, tell me any special dates for when citizens petitions could be received and all that, that we need.
That's what we're doing. That's by opening it. We're now saying we're open to citizen petitions.
No, I know, but as, do we then at a later date decide when they have to be submitted?
Well, we have a, we have a date here on the um, on the calendar of when the uh. When the warrant closes.
So let me, I made my motion to say, open the warrant today and to close the warrant on January twenty fifth.
Okay, your second?
Uh, second.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. That sounds good.
On your sheet of uh schedule here. Administrator, um, what was it? Operating budget select one December thirty first, so I expect Jeremy to work that Sunday.
Yeah, we already talked, but that's cause we got all messed up when Paul and I fled the country in the end of November.
And don't forget, it's New Year's Eve, so we want Jeremy working until midnight.
Yeah, I think we, but we do, what is our meeting though? It's actually a week from tonight, isn't it? Our next meeting? It's kinda weird. We kinda messed December up.
Yeah, fourteen.
Yep, and then it goes back to every other after that.
Yeah, okay. So we'll do whatever it is, January, whatever the January Thursday is, the first. What would it be? The fourth, January fourth, or whatever it is?
Yeah, so it'd basically be the fourteenth, the twenty eighth, and then the eleventh, and then the twenty fifth.
We're meeting the fourteenth, right? Then we're not gonna meet any more times this year.
Yeah, twenty eighth is on.
We're not gonna do that, I don't think, are we? We, we, what? Twenty eighth of December, you think we'll have issues to discuss?
Do you remember last year? I remember this very well. It was, no, it was two years ago, cause I was chair. And I remember it was five um Thursdays in that December, and we didn't think it, but we actually used the very last one before New Year's. Cause it actually was enough agenda items, and that was the whole argument about every other versus like twice a month and blah, 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 was well, based on that December.
Well, we, we don't, we can leave it on the calendar and cancel it if we need.
And then you decide. I mean, you're a chair, you decide for is or not, but sticking to that. The next one would be the fourteenth, uh, no, I'm sorry. Next one would be the eleventh of January, then the twenty fifth of January, just sticking to that every other week's schedule.
And twenty fifth is when we close the warrant.
Right.
It's good timing.
Can I, can I, can I just for clarification? So we've met tonight. And we're not, we're not gonna meet on the fourteenth, cause that's next week, correct?
I think we are gonna meet the fourteenth.
Oh, we are. Yeah, it's on the schedule.
I know, but what if? What if you skip the?
We have to get on the fourteenth, I think.
But if we meet on the fourteenth, we're not gonna meet again until January eleventh, almost a month later?
We don't know. I think, I think they were saying is maybe we'll meet on the fourteenth, and then we'll decide on the, the twenty eighth meeting. Based on what we have, what the agenda looks like. Is that what the collective were, were saying? I think.
Yeah, cause you don't know what's gonna come up in the days, weeks leading up to the twenty eighth, right? And if there's nothing, you can cancel it. But if there's something, at least you've, you've got, you know, it's on all of our schedules already.
But then, we, we were supposed to have met on the thirtieth. We did this cause people are traveling. And so, I mean. So either way, they go back to the old schedule for every other, or we just completely throw that out the window, do something different. The every other sketch, we, we supposed to be fourteenth, twenty eighth, eleventh, twenty fifth. That's what's supposed to happen. Today's meeting only exists because people, to accommodate people traveling.
Exactly, right. If we don't have anything like scheduled for the twenty eighth, but then we're just going a whole month later. Before we meet again.
You wanna skip the fourteenth and just do the twenty eighth?
I, I, I would think that that, my personal opinion would be that would, would probably be a good idea. But that's just me thinking.
Sean wants you, uh, you saw his chat. He wants you to make the agenda on Christmas Day, though. When are we gonna post the agenda? Go ahead, genie, straighten this out, genie.
Next, the fourteenth, the zoning board has the continuation of the uh farm road in Greenwood Street. And um, we're also gonna have to have a public hearing on a transfer of the, a liquor license for Chevron Fuel. And I won't have enough time to get that in the paper for the fourteenth, but the biggest thing is the ZBA's meeting, the fourteenth.
Does ZBA turn to Thursdays from Tuesdays to Thursdays?
Well, it was, it's just trying to get um, the, the board members, they tried to do it Tuesday, and normally the selectmen wouldn't have met on the fourteenth. Um, so because they were meeting on the seventh at the time they scheduled it, so that's. That's why.
I wanna correct them. It's always been scheduled for the fourteenth. That never changed, going back twenty years.
For some reason, I thought it was on the, uh, you were meeting on the seventh, so I just didn't think you'd be meeting two weeks in a row. So that was my fault.
Genie, um, will you have enough time to post the public hearing? Uh, if it's on the?
Yes, and then that night, you could also approve all the licenses that you have to approve, all the liquor, stable, common bits. Class twos, you could do that, or you could do some. Yeah, I can't, I wouldn't be there on the fourteenth, cause I have to be at the zoning meeting.
I think we all wanna be at the zoning meeting. In fact, we should post that right now. In fact, that's right, let's post fourteen.
And, and I'll talk to the board chair about recording the meeting and making it be on Zoom.
That's not a problem.
Novak is under your thumb, right? So. We've required him to do it.
So would you like me to post the select board for the fourteenth at the ZBA hearing?
Twenty eight, we'll have to meet the twenty eighth.
And I think that's the best, I think that's the best route to take, to be honest with you.
Yes, so, so I just could say, a- a- all eight of my towns are doing licenses in December. And their meetings are full of going through all the li- all the liquor licenses, all the. The uh used car licenses, all, all that stuff. That's what December is about. We need to do that in. And here we are, December seventh, and we haven't done them yet.
Well, we usually do them, we usually do, we've done them either the second, usually the second meeting in December is when. You've done the licenses in the past.
So which?
I think we have an early January.
Paul, we'll do the licenses on the twenty eighth.
I always wanted to know how many horses we have. This is sleepy sherbert. How many horses we have in town? That's why I like.
They did half the stable inspections yesterday, and they're doing the other half tomorrow.
So we'll have that important number, yeah.
Is all I'm saying. A- another serious meeting in December to do all the licenses.
Right, the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth and the fourteenth is at the.
I'll just post you that you're gonna be at the ZBA meeting.
Perfect.
So for the twenty eighth, I expect everybody to bring presents.
We just want you to be, want you to be present, Paul. In person, okay? We're gonna make it an in-person meeting.
I, I will say on the twenty eighth, I will have just driven uh home from Pennsylvania that day, so I might be not exactly on my A game.
So make Courtney drive and you can do it on your phone.
I, I should be home by the, by the time of the meeting. I just might not be functional.
That's okay.
You're always on your A game, so. Worried about it.
All right. Do, do we have any uh select board reports?
I have one more question to ask.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, the uh January calendar, that is the January through June. That is, everybody's looked at that, and those dates are fine. Correct?
Uh, I mean, I guess I, I have a, a standing personal request to that. May have to wait until I am someday chair of this board before I can enforce it, but. Uh, I, generally speaking, I would like to request, if possible, that we not meet on the same days. Um, as Conservation Commission, and this is not, this is not a board versus board issue. This is a me, personal issue. As a parent with a child. I'm asking for an accommodation, which is to say that. You know, if it is avoidable, I would prefer that we not meet on the first and third Thursdays of any month. Because that is always when conservation meets.
But the reason we can't do that is because it each month changes. We don't meet twice a month. We meet every two weeks.
So I, I, I understand that. I understand that, but I, I, you know. This, this, this board historically has uh shifted its schedule as we did this month and last month. For, you know, the, you know, personal schedule accommodations for its members, you know, the. The Concomit, I think, you know, uh, Marion, you can correct me, but I think. Generally speaking, the regulatory boards, the ones that hold a lot of public hearings. They, you have your meetings at, on your set schedules, because it's very predictable, and all the people that you work with know how to predict it. Concom is not changed. Their schedule for decades.
We meet two more times a year than Concom does.
Yeah, so I mean, all I'm saying is that every time schedule comes up, I'm going to make this request, and it is. It is, it is for me personally, it's an accommodation, and I think it is uh. To me, it's sort of uh an acknowledgement that um it is difficult for parents of elementary school children to. To serve on boards, and this is one of the reasons, and. You know, I think if you wanna lead by example, to be able to make an accommodation for me, I would be personally appreciative of it, but. I do, I understand all of the logic behind why you have chosen not to in the past, but I'm always gonna make the request.
Could I, could I suggest that we look at? The two weeks that the Concom doesn't meet, so the Concom meets the first and the third. Might came, we'd meet the second and the fourth rather than every two weeks.
Every year for the last like six years. I think it's George actually going every other or something like that, so it's like three chairs ago. Looks like you're not gonna have a conflict until what, March?
March, yeah.
Yeah, until March.
March, April and May.
Well, I know E- Eric, you, you had a schedule of your own that you wanted to, and so I don't wanna.
We'll talk about it. We sorted out. I mean, I know Paul might not remember. We've had this discussion a hundred times about extra meetings, blah, 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 last. Uh, that December, everything else. Um, we have till March to sort something else. Not till March, we have till like, say, February. We should sort it out before March.
Wait till then, but I, I actually, uh, along those lines, uh, Stephen and, and Jeff. I, I thought we need data, so I. I analyzed uh our schedule and counting on the schedule where they overlap and when they didn't. Over the la- over the last year. Actually, it wasn't up till, I did this maybe a month ago. And uh, in fact, over one, a one-year period that I analyzed, we ended up meeting. Uh, twenty-four times, which it evens out to two times a month. Uh, we didn't meet twenty-six times for various reasons. A couple of meetings were canceled or changed. And um, we overlapped with Concom. Uh, consistently over a period of seven months, so we couldn't go to Concom meetings and, you know, that. We, we were right on the Concom schedule for some reason, cause we changed this, we changed that. And um, so we, we couldn't go to Concom, they couldn't come to us for seven months. So, uh, you know, I've, uh, unless I, there might be other constraints that people have, and I don't want to ignore. That, but uh, I thought for a long time that we could do quite well to go. You know, predictably, like the second and fourth Thursday of every month. We have two less meetings a year, but here we are, wondering if we're gonna have enough for the next meeting to talk about, so.
If we adhere to the old cycle, we would not have that discussion.
Yeah, I, I think we need meetings every two weeks, cause we haven't had any meetings where we haven't had a full agenda, and a few that we've missed. We end up having a meeting tonight, and it's now ten twenty-three.
Something else to consider, so what is it? Uh, planning board meets on Tuesdays, correct? ZBA tradition meets on Tuesdays. Concom meets on Thursdays. If we wanna be completely, like, make us the accommodating board, uh, do we meet on Wednesdays? I don't know. Is there a significant board that meets on Wednesdays?
Board of Health meets on Wednesdays.
Board of Health does, and they're on the two-week schedule, I mean, the uh, twice a month schedule.
I got a select board meeting in another town on, on Wednesdays.
Yeah, so that doesn't work.
All right, we'll take it under advisement. You've given this to March, and we'll try to see what we can do, but. I'm still in favor of meeting every two weeks.
Willing to meet on Wednesdays?
I don't know.
Turns out, it turns out that Daryl and Michael don't have uh Pine Hill School kids, but. But they are on chairs of both boards.
Actually, might be convenient for them, to be honest with you.
Might be worth just asking.
Yeah, I'll ask.
That would solve the problem.
Not too much overlap there. It wouldn't be bad, to be honest, but then, I hate to, not, I don't hate this, I decided to take that up, but you know, to channel, I've already done it once. Stay channel George Morley. We are kind of the head executive board here, and yet we're always, we're the ones constantly accommodating. I get this is regulatory, I get that. One can predict whatever, um, you know, times a month or whatever, but you know, it is, I'm not unreasonable, cause I. I thought Conservation did change their schedule like four years ago. That they did something different. They had an applicant that was applying there. Who used to, would make it, but, but due to a change, they had to withdraw an application, or something to it. It's like when I first stepped on the board, I mean, it was five years ago. There's something along those lines.
It was planning board, Eric. Planning board used to be on Wednesdays.
Withdraw his application, cause they actually had an obligation during time, and, and um. Yeah, it was what's his name, and I remember it like, I remember pretty, obviously not, but I remember pretty well.
When Chris Owen came on. He had a sailing thing every Wednesday. And we changed it to Tuesday.
So if I could, we've already adopted a policy, and the policy is. All boards and committees are asked to schedule, hold meetings at a time and date not in conflict with the select board meetings. Which are typically held on alternating Thursday nights at seven PM. When possible, regulatory bodies should not schedule meetings at the same time as any other regulatory body. So we already have a policy, just a question of enforcing it.
All right, let's make it, let's make it a discussion for the twenty eighth. I remember that policy, actually, I remember that policy. Thank you, Paul. I do remember that policy.
Yeah, good, good retrieval, Paul. Your hard drive was spinning tonight. Let's, let's go, let's go on and make some, any abbreviated uh. Town administrator select board reports. Is there anything that people wanna? Let's do uh, select board first. Any updates? Jeremy, you have any updates?
Um, just, just a couple, real quick. The Public Safety Committee met um, on the twenty eighth and came up with some recommendations for Coolidge Street. So there was a, a short-term uh recommendation to install some speed feedback signs. And also to continue to work with the developer um of Coolidge Crossing, Metover Commons on. Uh, you know, when that project moves forward, implementing some more permanent solutions there, so. Um, a little movement on that front on Coolidge Street. There, the Public Safety's Committee's next meeting is in January. Uh, an update on the library construction. Good news, that six-point-nine line, the back patio windows and the foundation waterproofing. Is complete. It's done.
Well, they got the second bay done much quicker, huh?
They learned from their past experience, yes. So it's, patio is put back together and, and we're, we're moving on from that, so. Um, still waiting on news on the, on the settlement in general, but just wanted to relay that on the, the actual work. And then just two, two quick staffing updates. Um, good news, uh, Joyce Hastings, who's been our interim conservation agent, is gonna become our permanent agent uh come January. Um, so that's good news.
And as an employee, that, as a consultant.
I know there, there's some happy folks there, including myself, so. That's good news, and just some food for thought, um, and conversation and another. That's good news, and just some food for thought, um, and conversation at another time, but. With um the recent uh resignation of Dorothea and Gino's retirement. Um, I think um the town in general has a, has an opportunity to, to, to re-envision or talk about its approach to sustainability, so. I just wanted to put that out there for food for thought uh and discussion at a later date, so.
Is that position posted right now, or is it not posted pending uh discussion about, about the role?
It's not posted currently, um. And I, I think, I think we should have some, some discussions on it before, before it's posted. Um, there's the two positions, actually, the sustainability grant, um. Uh, position, which was what Gino was doing with, with the planning board function, and then there's the sustainability coordinator, which was Dorothea's function. Um, and, you know, when, when these, this sort of turnover happens, it's sort of the right time to. Take a look at what we're doing and see if it's what we wanna continue doing. So the position is not.
The, the position was established at a town meeting vote, right, so how much leeway do we have in, you know, altering the, the job description or anything about it? That's an HR question, and I'm not an HR guy, so I really don't know the answer to that.
Both positions are subject to the Personnel Administration Plan, and both have job descriptions that. Should, if, if they haven't been reviewed by the Personnel Board, so, I don't, I think they're still subject to that process.
As I recall, the town meeting vote was about the money for the position.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
So the town meeting vote didn't sort of establish the role of the position?
I don't believe so, but it did earmark.
It wasn't back and forth, oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, cause it wasn't earmarked, there wasn't back and forth in this board, we had quite a bit of discussion on hours and benefit, and I think that was all like. Not defined in town meeting, I think there was, anyway, I'm just rosy recollecting, but.
It was initiated by the fifty thousand dollar grant, right?
Yeah, but I seem to recall that, I mean, I was on advisory at the time, but the select board, there was discussion about making the, the person. Uh essentially a broader municipal grant writer, and there was a great deal of. Pushback both from the proponents of it and from town meeting itself, and so that was taken out, so that's why I knew, there were some restrictions as to. The definition of the role, I thought, at the town meeting vote, but I just, I don't remember the specifics anymore.
So can I suggest, rather than speculating on this, we actually get the documents have for our next meeting?
On the twenty eighth.
And then move to adjourn.
Uh, no, uh, we're not moving to adjourn, cause we need to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This, this one change on one set of minutes that, that Diane found that mentioned earlier.
Yes.
Yeah. But we'll make the approval conditions on that.
On that one change, yep.
So, so we'll take a vote, do we have a second, is someone, you seconded Marion?
She did.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul, and, and I, I as well. Thank you, everyone, that was a long haul to ten thirty-two, so that's a, that's a four-hour meeting.
Paul's got one more move.
I know, he accepts money and.
Motion to adjourn.
Accepts money and ends meetings, anyway, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.